Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Well, the first agenda item tonight is actually a fun thing, which is the IAS CAB Community Leadership Recognition Awards. This is, this year, we're giving it out to 11 high school students. And I want to turn it over to our co-chairs, Allison Willis and Tanya Hunt, to say a few words about the award and maybe about IAS and CAB in general, whatever they like.
Thank you, thanks. Tanya and I have been doing this together, I think, for six years.
Yeah.
And every year, we wonder, who's going to be that one student that's going to rise to the occasion and become our leader? And every year, we manage to have one, maybe two. This year, we have 11, and they're really incredible kids. We, every single one of them demonstrates characteristics of leadership, not only in our CAB meetings, but throughout the school year, inside and outside of the classroom. So we have students that work with kids with disabilities. We have students who are in charge of pep club. We have students that register people to vote at school. We have students that participate in honest dialogue about stressors and how to deal with stressors, and then go out to the community and communicate, you know, healthy and responsible messages. So we're thrilled to be here to present these awards.
Allison said it really well, so I don't have a lot to add. I would just say that every single one of these students has, has done more than one thing to distinguish himself or herself in the arena of being a leader and setting a positive example. So we, we thought that it wasn't too many to recognize 11, because they really all did distinguish themselves.
And all deserve it.
Yeah, absolutely.
So congratulations.
Our next person is Aiden Daly. Congratulations. L H Wire. Congrats. 恭喜 Jack Rados. And Josh Hunt.
We didn't plan it that way.
And Abby Krieger. Tanita Shalkat. Congrats. Bella Smith. Brand Steinberg. And last but not least, Clementine Whitney. Thank you all for coming.
Next up is equally exciting, if not quite as noisy. It's the presentation of the theater entry feasibility study. So I don't know if you want to give a one-minute history of why you're presenting to us tonight?
All right.
And then, and then the presentation.
Sure.
What we asked you to do.
Yes. Hi, John Malone, Ferguson Malone Architecture. We were hired by the Village to do a feasibility for an entrance on the west side of the theater to replace the existing entrance that's there right now. And somewhere during the process, we shifted focus. What's in front of the Village now and in front of the Board is a plan to add a more substantial entrance to the, to the east side of the building. The credit for this thinking, I was just saying, there's a little anecdote. We, we did develop something for the west, which some people in this room have seen. And then at some point Greg said, why is it there? And we, and we didn't have a good answer. So that's why we, the design's in front of you today. So the, the benefits of this project and what we can look at today is that there's, there's a lot of benefits in terms of the main goals of the project, the, the visibility and the increased access and the safety of focusing on this side. The project was, the project for the, the study was, included our firm, but also AKRF, their environmental planners, and they did support work that was associated with the impacts, the economic impacts that this would have in the, in the neighborhood. We also had OLA, a firm that does HVAC consulting. So they did our MEP consulting on this. And then we had a costing consultant as well, DAC Consulting, that did costing for this. The project has been through a few iterations. It has been developed in coordination with the Theater Commission and the Theater Director and staff, and also some members of the Board. So this is the, the first time that you've seen the completed report, or late on Friday, I suppose, we've seen the completed report. And that's sort of the history of how we got there. I'm not sure what's the best way to go through it.
The feasibility study is not a commitment to this whole project.
Right, right, right.
But feasibility is what's been paid.
Right.
Right.
So, so the theater, the theater has a few deficits that are obvious to anybody who's used the theater in terms of the entry sequence and, and, you know, both in terms of safety, but also in terms of visibility and how the theater operates, there's operational deficits. And this is a feasibility study that's meant to look at ways to address this. And this, in our estimation, is, is the, the right level of project to try to address this. It is not a large project by any means for something like this, like a theater, but it is, it is substantial enough that it required this kind of study. I don't know, Ron, what do you want to, do you want to go through some just sort of?
Yeah, I mean, I think, maybe I'll just say, with where we are now, this was a concept that came up, I'd say about two years ago we started this. You know, as you say, we kind of had a major change from moving it from here to there. Once we moved it to the, the right side, we also, obviously, then had to involve the schools, which we've had a very kind of high-level presentation to them. The next natural step would be just make sure that they're still interested, assuming our Board is still interested after your presentation of that job.
Right.
And then we probably move forward with actually seeing, you know, going from a feasibility study to a fundraising effort. Although it's not, you know, a gigantic expansion, it is still a relatively large, substantial monetary investment in the theater, you know, and so I think that, yeah, obviously, that's going, we're going to have to find many sources of funding. We hope a lot of it will be privately sourced and then also grant money. But the Village is also going to be spending money on this. So it's going to be a multi-pronged, multi-year effort. But we are now, you know, something, we couldn't really raise money for something that wasn't a concept, and we didn't know how feasible it was.
Right.
So maybe you can just kind of run through, you know, kind of the, the project, your, your, what the vision you guys came up with, and then, you know, talk about some costs and things like that.
Sure. Okay, so I think the way the, the, the study is organized is the first section, you know, there's introduction and summary and stuff, but the first section is really about project objectives. So we may want to just sort of start there in terms of what was the real intent of the project. So the first one was, if, if you've noticed, the theater, the theater's original entrance was always the front of this building, right, the, the Main Street entrance. And over time, in order to separate the function of the Village Government from the function of the theater, and when the theater was brought back into service, you know, two decades ago now, is that what it is?
Three.
Three decades.
Late '70s.
Three, late '70s. So the, the function, functional requirements of that led to this side entrance to the theater. So the, the main thing that we wanted to happen, and this even started with the earliest part of the project, was to do something to improve the identity and visibility of the theater and let it have its own real entrance and sort of replace what was taken from it when the staircase was removed and it was cut off from the main entrance of the building. The other thing that the theater struggles with right now is sort of the safety, the way in which it moves people in and out of the building. It's a very crowded entrance. It's really an entrance that was designed to meet the minimum egress requirements at the time. It's not an entrance that is especially safe or functional. And it's, was at the time when it was built, it wasn't accessible. It's still not truly accessible by, you know, current ADA requirements. So a, a new entrance helps correct that and makes it available to as many people as possible, differently abled than otherwise. And then in terms of, one of the goals of the overall project is to increase the theater usage. So right now, the current theater does not have air conditioning, so it has a period during the summer where it's not used. The project includes air conditioning of the theater, the, the main theater, as well as the addition, and that would increase the usage, but also the visibility and the lobby that's being provided and the sort of the gathering space that's being provided is also would increase usage as well. The improved operations, there's, as part of this, the ticketing. I don't know if people have been aware of how you get tickets when you're in the theater. You're sort of crammed into the line while you're trying to figure. So, so this gives it, this is, and when we had talked about as a group, this is not a, the kind of space that would be provided in a big suburban theater outside of Dallas or something like that. What this is, the experience that we're hoping to get to with this addition, the size of the addition, is more like a tight little Broadway theater. It's not, it's not like it's something extravagant. It's like the, the amount of space that is being proposed, being added, is relatively small, but it's trying to meet some kind of minimum requirement to, that, you know, for gathering when you come in and out of the building and for ticketing and other operational limitations. The, the other thing, one of the focuses was the theater arrival sequence. So very much part of going to the theater is, and is the approach, how you get into the building, how you meet people as you arrive, and how you speak and gather with people after and during intermissions and stuff like that. Right now, there's really no ability to do that. So some of the stuff that you'll see in this helps that kind of function, the interaction between community. And we think that that has a community benefit beyond theater going, right? That has a, a larger community benefit. And then the last piece on this is sort of try to address some school district synergies. So the, the building that we're proposing is actually not on our property. It's on the school district's property. So it, it requires cooperation from them. One of the things that the building includes in a very minimal level at this point is, is a way to kind of address the, the accessibility problems that the school has with the gym. So to the extent that we could fix some of the school district's issues or at least look at ways to improve the condition from, in Main Street School, and given the location of the building, we were looking at that. And then also synergies between theater usage and the school. If we could make a separate entrance for the school, we've shown something that gives the possibility for separate entrance, and there might be some way that the school has just a very clear sort of fluid movement between the, the theater. So there's a section, the next section is about the existing conditions of the building. But in terms of the program requirements, what's included in the project right now, there's a box office, right, a, a clear box office, staff workspaces that are associated with the box office. Again, these are things that aren't, aren't really part of the theater right now. Restrooms, actual restrooms with a theater cap that might accommodate the 400 people that would be in the theater. A concessions area on the same level as the theater. A lobby and, and gallery area that can, you know, adjacent to the concessions area that can accommodate people gathering between before and after performances, but also during intermissions. There's also, in the basement level, in the lowest level, there's a back black box theater, which will allow the, the theater manager to book both performance in the upper level, but then also potentially book rehearsal and other, even, maybe even small performances in the lower level. So it increases the viability of theater in that way. And then there's a program requirement that are related to a new properly-sized handicap elevator, ego stairs, improvements to the theater restrooms and staff, cast-related functions right at the theater. There's some changes that we're making to the, you know, to the stuff around the, the theater box at the, at the top level. And then improvements to the entry plaza, which is, you'll see in these renderings, there's a, a large outdoor gathering space that's associated with the entry. And then lastly, HVAC improvements, which really means air conditioning of the theater box and the addition. So the schematic design, there's a section on the site selection where the, the area that we've chosen is to the east of Village Hall. There's a, an area between the Main Street School and Village Hall that's sort of underutilized right now. It's quite pretty, but it's underutilized in some, in some sense, and that's really where the entrance is. One of the benefits in terms of the grade and the location there is we can find a way in to the ground level of the theater that is accessible without stairs, without ramps. So the, you'll see in the design for the site that we've come, we're coming from the sidewalk to the front door without any ramps. And then we would be, if you were differently able, you'd be up, up in elevator if you needed to. The, the approach that we took to the building, you'll notice that the building is not trying to look like it was designed in 1900. It look, it's intended to look like a modern building of this era, but it has materials and a configuration that relates to the old building. Typically, when you attach a new building to a historic building, you have to be careful. The, the standard practice for historic buildings is to not try to emulate the style that was previously there. And I think that, this is, this is sometimes counterintuitive to people, but it's related to not watering down the historic material that you actually have, right? So when someone looks at an addition to a historic building, they should say, oh, that's the old building, and that's the new building. And there shouldn't ever be confusion about what is actually the historic building and what is the new building. So that's, that's something I think we've had some questions along the way, and if people have questions about that, we're, we're happy to answer that. But that doesn't mean that the new building should take the front position, that it, the addition is intended to sit back and sit quietly behind this building and to let this building be the, basically the main cast member, right? And this building is supposed to be supporting. And at the same time, we're in a struggle where the addition, we want to have, the addition to have enough visibility and enough sort of pop that people recognize it as the entrance, immediately recognizing the entrance as they drive by in the car, as they walk, that there's, so there's, there's a little bit of a balancing act that we tried to do there, where the building is set back so that it doesn't take away or compete with the Village Hall in general, but it also provides enough visibility to move the theater forward. The plaza design, we've shown a few benefits there. The location of this plaza means that it could be an outdoor performance space. It's going to be an outdoor gathering space. So you'll see there's built into this little plaza design or some seat walls and a little stage area that would actually face either into the plaza or out onto Main Street. So if you had festival days, like we do sometimes, you could have a band up there playing out towards the street. Right now, budgeted into the project, we, you know, there, we had sustainability in here. I mean, there, there are a few things that we're trying to do with solar shades to limit the impact of the heat cane on some of the glass that we're showing in this. This isn't, it, we're not showing this as a zero energy or some high-energy building. Right now, but, but it will be much more sustainable than, say, the old building or a building that was built, you know, 10 years ago to meet modern code and be sustainable in that sense. Restrooms, we've shown what looks like a lot of restrooms, the, the code, the code, we're meeting, we're basically meeting the code requirement for restrooms. That's what's shown in here. If you met what theater designers would want in here, it would be the entire building that we're showing would be filled with restrooms. So, you know, it's, it's much better, the count is actually going from, I think, five to 13. So it's, it's a different, it's hopefully a much better experience. Existing HVAC conditions, right now, there isn't air conditioning in the existing building, and what's being proposed is both the new theater box and the addition would be air conditioning. I mean, that's really the, the basis of that. There's more detail than that, obviously, but we can go into that. So we do have drawings of the proposed addition. I think what may be best in this environment would be to just show you guys where the renderings ended up, or show the audience where the renderings.
Can I show the plaza design?
Right, so the plaza, the plaza design here is hard, it's, you know, just a line drawing. But you'll see here, this, this is supposed to be, so the, the entry from, the front of the Village Hall is down here, this is the east, and this is the river down here. And so right where the statue.
Rip Van Winkle.
Rip Van Winkle. So if you imagine entering into this plaza, right where Rip Van Winkle is around the kiosk, we have a plaza area and the hillside that now has the red maple and the brick retaining wall has some seat walls, and you step up into, right up there is the stair that goes into Main Street School. So the whole, the whole plaza, and then there would be plantings and other stuff associated with it. Generally, in terms of the plan, on the lower level, you'll see there's a big box that is the black box theater. On the entry level, you'll see there's a main vestibule entry, box office that you access from inside, a stair that brings you right up to the theater level. The goal is to get you up there as fast as possible, and then otherwise, what's shown on that level is restrooms and the office toward the theater. And then on the upper level, again, a very simple plan. It's just a stair arriving at a large gallery lobby area, a concession area, and then views from the concession area to the west, over towards the river, views out the lobby area to Main Street. Part of the theory behind that is that the activity in the lobby acts as a sign to Main Street. So if you have a glass second story and you see a lot of activity in there, you can see that something happens and sort of projects that activity out onto the street. That's the roof. These are the flat elevations of the building, which might be better served by showing you the, the renderings. So this is the, the entry as you approach from the plaza. So you see there's signage on that level, which is the, sort of the back of the box office that shows you what's happening, future things. We're assuming that that signage would most likely be digital, meaning, you know, updatable that way, not paper signage. And then you see the way that the second level lobby is acting as a projector for the activity above. This is the view from the second floor lobby, where you sort of see, one of the things that, that this design is intended to do is highlight the exterior of the existing building. So when you're in this space, the reason it has a lot of glass is your, it gives you views out, but it also sort of highlights the adjacent building. If you remember, when you walk up the stairs to the theater right now, I think even then, there was an attempt to sort of show you the side of the building and the old detail, the brick detail. So it's kind of a, an updated, more subtle version or, or a more put-together version of that, so that the focus is sort of against the building. The interior, what, what's shown in this, these, these renderings are early, they're schematic renderings. What you're meant to see in this rendering is that the space is relatively modern and contrasts from the space in the old theater. I think the goal there is to highlight, so when you do cross that threshold in the corner to go into the theater, you're going from sort of the modern world that we live in into this old theater, and it's meant to highlight and sort of celebrate that you're going into this old theater, which is, you know, a, a knockoff of, of the Ford Theater, and it's sort of a beautiful piece in some way. The other thing that you're supposed to see here is the donor wall, right? So if you give money, then it gets something on the donor wall.
And the river.
One brick.
This gives you more of a, another rendering that we've added. It gives you the context of the building from Main Street. So there's no cars, and there's no wires, there's no anything in the way, it's just right up. But what you do see is like, so this is, this is Village Hall. And if you're taking this rendering further out, you'd see that, you know, Village Hall is really taking the front seat. The theater is what is set back. And what we're trying to do with the theater is have enough materiality that it relates to sort of the garden features next to it, the brick. But then it, it acts like just sort of a little hyphen, a little connector to the side. It's not, it's not intended to, to, to compete with the building.
You see the school.
Right, and there's a little bit of Main Street School shown there. So then in terms of community benefits, economic impacts, we went into some detail, and that's the scope of the detail, if you do review this, you'll see, has to do with a lot with granting. So part of the, the role would be to pursue state grants. So some of the, the stuff that you see in this section may be, you know, a little more detailed and not so impressive, but it, it is, it is, the intent is to be able to meet the requirements of some of these grants. So basically, what it indicates is that it will make some local jobs. It will have impacts outside of the theater, right, for restaurants and services that support the theater when people go. And it will have regional impacts, where a project like this will improve conditions outside of the Village. So whether that's as far away as Terry Town, but, or farther away into the entire River towns region. These are tables showing how employment in the area improves. There's, just briefly, in traffic and parking, part of the interest about this location is if you've noticed what it would take to drop somebody off at the front door of this theater, right? You have to make a left, right, and you have to do a three-point turn and get back out, right? So if you have 400 people coming to the theater and they want to get dropped off at the front, that's not really the right way to do it. So part of, one of the, part of what we've done by relocating it now, the, the no parking area in front of the fire department can double as a drop-off area for the theater. That's where the drop-off condition would be, be much safer than what is there right now. And that's the real circulation change that we've changed. If you notice, there isn't a parking garage associated with this. So we haven't solved the issue of where everybody parks their cars, but we have solved and improved the safety around the drop-off piece. Part of the discussion with the school district was potentially to formalize the relationship that this theater has right now in terms of using that, that parking lot for theater events. Right, there you see the great, I don't know if you can, you can see right here, this, this little no parking zone in front now would end up becoming the drop-off condition without any loss of parking spaces or any, I mean, you wouldn't be dropping off if there was a fire, but other than that, it's just. Cost estimates. So we've done, for the project, that includes both soft costs and hard costs. Soft costs meaning engineering design fees, and hard costs meaning the actual construction costs. The, the total cost for the project, the big, the big number is approximately $5 million right now, which, you know, is, is, and what Brian said, it's a substantial number. It's driven, it's a municipal project. It has built into it a little bit of a phased project, because part of what this design allows for by adding a new entrance is that the old entrance can stay in service, so you don't have to bring the theater out of service while you do this project over a year. So the goal would be to do, I'm digressing a little bit, the goal would be to keep the theater open while you, while you do this work and then close it as, for the shortest period possible. The construction cost includes, you know, detail, and it's attached as an addendum or an appendix of, you know, all the levels. So we went into, you know, excavation, concrete masonry, structural steel, all of that. There are the, the system, the HVAC system that's being proposed. We had started working with a, with a proposal from about 10 years ago, or it might be more, seven, 10. It's, it's similar to that proposal in terms of what, what would be the impact on the interior of the theater, but we've done a little bit more work and brought that up to date. So 10 years is a long time in the world of HVAC, especially in the, in the improvements.
It was 2007.
2007, so it's longer than 10 years ago. So what's shown now, the costs associated with HVAC, which are probably the highest costs that you see as a single line item cost, are related to doing a system that would meet the code requirements of today. So, you know, So, you know, you could do much less, in a, less efficient systems even ten years ago than you're allowed to do today, so, and this, this is also reflecting a system that is not, it's, it's a true institutional system as opposed to, you know, trying to piece it together with lower quality equipment. You'll see there's detail included in, in this, five million that's shown there is escalation factors for, you know, assuming that we have a fundraising phase, we would have to take into account the escalation factors associated with that, there is architectural services, engineering services, but also CM services for the village to manage the project as it's being, as it's happening. So in terms of phasing, I touched on that briefly, the project phasing that we're talking about is, you know, how do you keep the theater, there's basically two phases, there's a phase where you build this addition, and it's not actually connected to the theater until the last phase, and you get it as far as you can, and then the theater goes out of service, the theater, the work that's proposed in the theater gets done, and the connection gets done, hopefully that would happen over a three, four month period during the summer. I'm sure this is properly put together. There's a schedule shown here, it shows, you know, approximately a two-year project, and it includes fundraising phase, and we were, we were counseled to have the fundraising phase start like tomorrow and end, you know, four weeks after the first performance, so it's a long fundraising phase.
Doesn't seem very long to me.
Yeah, that's right, right, exactly, it may be longer. We were counseled to say that it was going to be very quick, and yes.
Just need the checks.
Just need the checks, people, so I have the checks. So, I mean, that, that's where we are, I hope that was not too quick or too slow.
We'll be posting this online.
Oh, and so, yeah, so Larry's saying, this will be posted online so people can take a closer look at the detail. I don't know, you have any questions now, or you want to move on?
I'm going to head to the, I got to see most of this presentation in a slightly earlier version, when you presented it to the town office commission, I think, Tommy. Yeah, so I, I mean, I, again, I think, again, this is a feasibility study, and, you know, it's completely not feasible, the school doesn't have any interest in it, so. So, you know, I don't think it's probably the right time to ask a lot of questions, I think what we'll do is we'll post it, if anybody asks questions, we'll be happy to address those, including our board, but if this goes forward, and, and I hope it does, in some, some shape or form, we'll have a lot more meeting and, meetings and time to address it, so.
Right.
I think, I believe you guys are already scheduled to meet with the Board of Ed in July, so I guess we'll, we'll see if it's feasible from that perspective as well, we actually have some land.
Right.
So I, I think this is a, from a big concept that started several years ago to what we have now, I think we have enough, if this school is interested, to, you know, start fundraising and see what the appetite is for that, we've already looked into some grants, that'll probably take a few years as well, you know, so I think that there is funding, I think we've identified potential for funding at the federal and state level, as well as, you know, individuals have said they'd be interested in private fundraising as well, so I think we have kind of all three prongs, as well as interest from the, from the village. So, you know, I think this is a opportunity to add not just to the theater, but I think, I mean, to me, if nothing goes forward, I'd love to see if we could do something with the plaza, because I think that's just such a cool area on Main Street that would be gathering spot, I mean, I think now we've seen, just the work we've done in front of Village Hall.
Right.
Has made this kind of a, a gathering spot, and we're, we're planning activities, and to have the, the kind of literal center of our town be the cultural center of our town is, is just very exciting to me, so, you know, I know this board is, has been very enthusiastic in the past, so hopefully our colleagues up the hill are as well, I guess it doesn't really cost them much, though, other than time and space, so. We, we look forward to hearing from you since you get back from Board of Education.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much for all the work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. So for the mundane now. First announcement, check over twenty-five thousand dollars for our policy, we had a check over twenty-five thousand dollars, which was for ninety thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and five cents, which was related to the firehouse interior project, which came out of the capital insurance budget, and it went to a virtue deal contract.
Let's go announce the awards that we.
Sure, you can do that.
I just wanted to add to the announcements that the Village of Irvington won a very nice award, and several of us were there on Thursday night to pick up the award, it's, the award is given by the Westchester Municipal Planning Federation, and they give, they give awards for all kinds of projects across the county, things in Yonkers about the, the daylighting of the, of the river, things in Peekskill about artist housing, and the award that Irvington received related to the Irvington Comprehensive Plan Update, and many of you know that we, we have a comprehensive plan, and just recently, we updated that comprehensive plan, and the way in which we did it here in Irvington was, was viewed as, as a very effective way to do that kind of thing, and I'll just read their little paragraph. Using a unique hub-and-spoke approach to address the planning goals of the village, members of the planning, zoning, and architectural review boards, along with the trustees, worked within an organized system of public outreach to communicate and process information towards the efficient and focused update of their comprehensive plan. So there were, I don't know, forty, some people that volunteered from the community to be part of that, and the way in which it was organized was considered effective, and for that, we got an award, so be it.
Great, thank you, Tommy. Couple of quick announcements, I wanted to thank Joe Ortino and the rec staff for putting together a great girls' basketball team, we tried to do it in May and it was rained out, luckily we got it in yesterday before any rain happened, so that was a, a great, wonderful day. Couple other quick announcements, the library book sale starts this Thursday at the library, so it's Thursday from ten AM to eight PM, Friday from ten AM to five PM, and Saturday from ten AM to four PM. And lastly, my last announcement is, the presentation on slavery in Irvington is going to be on Tuesday, June eighteenth at seven PM in the library, which I think was also with the Sports Society, or?
It's the Friends of the Library who have organized that event.
So, yeah, so it's, it's basically looking at the history of, from colonial times up until the end of slavery in this area, which is, you know, very fascinating. Anyone else have any announcements? We do not have any correspondence, so I will open it up to public comment for anything that is not on the agenda tonight.
Not on the agenda, I want to speak about the Broadway.
Yes, we're going to have, we're going to have a public hearing on that, and then we're going to have many more public hearings on that, so plenty of chance to speak. Anything that's not on the agenda, please.
I was told that there was going to be discussion about a charger, car charger tonight, is that not the case? Is that the word that went out?
I didn't know anything about that.
Make a public comment.
Come and, come and make a comment.
Yes, I had heard that there might be some discussion about a, having, installing a public charger for cars somewhere in Irvington, and I, I have an electric car, and I would, that would be very helpful, and, yes, thank you, I have voice, you know, I, I think that would be helpful, and I think that will be sort of forward-thinking, and I just, I know there's a lot of issues with that, because there's different kinds of electric cars, and, but that, that was the word that went around for the Green Policy Task Force.
Yes, well, we have been looking at it for the last several months.
Okay.
Identifying locations.
Okay, yeah.
I think, I think we've gotten it down to about four or five different locations, I don't.
There's, there's three real viable locations, the, the Aqueduct parking lot, the location near the Irvington Library parking lot, and location in Cedar Cutson Park, and we are working, we were working with a contractor, we may be reevaluating that relationship, so we're still, still looking into it.
Great, all right, well, I'm the chair of the Board of Farmers Market, and we would really like that, and I think it would really help encourage people to come, you know, to the market from other towns, and, and, you know, I think it's become a really big thing, and that would be, it's a nice.
Great, so it's in process, but we just want to talk about it tonight, so.
Didn't know.
And if one is in the Aqueduct parking lot, that's a great location.
Exactly, exactly, all right, thank you.
Any other?
I'm just, Larry, can you provide us maybe the next workstation, work session, maybe an update about? You said you mentioned you were looking at potentially a different contractor.
I'll go through the entire plan.
Would you, yeah, I appreciate that, thank you.
So the next meeting on Wednesday, next Wednesday, we'll be talking about it. Did you want to come up and say something?
Good evening, Mayor Trustees and Mayor Smith, my name is Shaolin Chang, I'm in the sixth grade, and I founded the MSS Environmental Club a few years ago. I'm here today because I'm deeply concerned with Irvington's use of leaf blowers and other lawn care practices. They cause air pollution and noise pollution that are harmful to our environment and our health. We've all seen a sign that say, "Clean Air Zone, No Idling." This is a county law against idling cars, even though cars are heavily regulated, have catalytic converters to reduce pollution, and are required to be inspected annually. However, unlike cars, gas leaf blowers do not have catalytic converters, are not regulated, and produce ninety-three times the amount of pollution in the form of benzene, lead, ozone, carbon monoxide, formaldehyde, and other known carcinogens and toxins. I'm wondering why there isn't a law against these machines when they are clearly more harmful. In addition to the engine emissions, a lesser-known source of pollution is the gasoline that is spilled during refueling. You may remember the Exxon Valouda disaster of nineteen eighty-nine? I don't remember, it was decades before I was born, but I've read about it, about the eleven million gallons of gas spilled into Alaskan waters. According to the Clean Air Foundation, refueling of lawn equipment in the U.S. spills more than seventeen million gallons annually. Aside from the gas engine-related pollution, the mere act of blowing recirculates dust, mold, pollen, fecal matter, pesticides, road debris, which includes heavy metals, fertilizer, and other pollutants from the ground. This cloud of visible and microscopic particles can linger in the air for days, and the smallest particles can settle deep into lungs, causing irreversible harm. According to American Lung Association, Westchester got an air quality grade of F. Poor air quality can trigger allergies and asthma attacks, long-term exposure can lead to bronchitis, chronic pulmonary disease, and lung cancer. Even unborn fetuses are affected, every year, the U.S. has sixteen thousand premature deaths linked to air pollution. The noise generated by lawn machinery has its own set of health concerns. Leaf blowers create noise levels loud enough to cause permanent hearing damage for the operator and bystanders, such as students walking home from school, moms walking their babies, and even our pets. Even when the noise is far enough away that it doesn't cause hearing loss, prolonged exposure to loud noise increases stress levels and blood pressure, which can lead to heart disease. Noise negatively impacts work productivity, whether you work at a business in the Irvington Village or at home, like so many residents, the landscaping crews are every capable. We are taxpaying residents of Irvington, well, they are. You as the elected officials of this community have been entrusted with the responsibility to protect our interests, you have the authority to do something to help me, my classmates, and all of current and future members of the Irvington community, to live more healthy and productive lives. I know that the village has taken steps in the past to reduce the use of leaf blowers that create constraints in use and noise levels. These current restrictions, while well-intentioned, are not easily enforceable, and most do not apply to larger, more polluting properties. In today's world, we have an obligation to be informed and to take action to change things that we can. Other towns here in our county, like Larchmont, Rye, Bedford, Scarsdale, and Hastings, have already taken practical action and successfully outright banned gas leaf blowers during the summer. Will Irvington do at least this much and even more to safeguard our Irvington residents? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Interesting in Tommy update, well, we had just brought this up again, I'd say a month ago, looking at potentially the summer ban, and I actually met with all of the mayors of the River towns, as well as Orsley, Elmsford, Tarry, Tarrytown's River Town, and it's going to be Hollow, who actually is the name of the town in Greberg. We looked at potentially adopting the same law, so it's easier to pay for, say, if you're a crew that goes to Tarrytown, then you go to Hastings next, you know what the laws are, because it's very confusing right now, and Irvington probably has the most confusing law on, on leaf blowers in the history of leaf blower laws, and that was because we were trying to please too many people when we passed our first leaf blower law. So I think what, what I envision happening is, Yonkers Law, and then Hastings would like Dodge Ferry and Irvington to also adopt Yonkers Law. I haven't read Yonkers Law yet, so I can't say if I'm going to, but we are working on this. Tarrytown already told them they're not changing their leaf blower laws, but, so this is in the process, you gave us a lot of great facts to consider when we talk about this as well, so this is an ongoing discussion that we're having right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The spelling of your name, S-H-A-L-I-N-E.
So I had two quick comments, which is, in terms of other polluting sources, you know, the two-stroke engines, weed whackers is another big one, and just to throw that out, most lawn mowers are four-cycle and have reduced emissions, but, you know, depends on how weather, content care of. The other thing that I thought might be interesting to think about, besides the health impacts, is the impacts on the soil health itself, not on human health or, or animal health, but the kind of degradation that happens to the soil when the top duff layers are blown off of it. You can take a very active organic area and convert it kind of just a hardpan, you know, solid clay, and that has limited water absorption, so that, there's a lot of secondary impacts when people are using leaf blowers in their landscape management along, around garden beds and stuff, so just to throw that out is, but thank you for the details that you went into, I think it was an excellent report.
Any other public comment? Please.
I would like to follow up on that, your man. About noise ordinance, do we have a noise ordinance so that the leaf blowers don't begin until at least ten AM or something? Because if you work nights, they start at eight o'clock, anyway.
Would you have a noise ordinance at least ten AM, though?
I think it's nine. I don't have it in front of me. No, not the noise ordinance, but when you can run the leaf blowers, I believe it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't, I don't.
I think it's nine.
You have our time on this, if you, if you look at the code line, it's, I think it's under new, right, the leaf blower, it's under new, since this man has the time.
On weekdays, it's, you can run a leaf blower between eight and five, then weekends and public holidays, it's ten to four. But about the noise ordinance, the police don't actually have a calibrated certified decibel reader, and all the free apps that we all use to show that it's way over the limit, they don't really count it, so it's kind of like you're at the mercy of whoever answers the phone, or whoever drives off when you call.
Well, I think the interesting, the other side of that coin is that the police have been called out to electric leaf blowers, which people can use, and they've asked them to shut those off as well, so it's kind of the yin and the yang of that. Typically, what happens when the police respond, they ask the person if they can stop doing it, and they typically do, so it's, they don't get to the point where they say it's sixty-five decibels or not, they typically say, hey, can you, can you stop doing this?
But if it's, if it's during the day, like if it's during the official hours where you're allowed to do it, and it's a hundred decibels, it's considerably higher than sixty-five or seventy, which is the limit now.
Yeah.
And if it's before five PM, it's very hard to get the police to respond, because they say, well, we don't know, you know, we can't say what the decibel level is.
That's why we're looking at it, yeah. Any other public comment, not related to items on the? Okay, so next we'll go to the consent agenda, do you have any questions on this? If not, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Next, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing to consider local amendment and fair and lawful applicable provisions of the zone code, can I second?
Second.
All in favor? You're on.
Just took the college model affordable housing provisions and integrated into the Irvington call, and the next couple few years, though, the board enacted some changes to what is issued. In the next few years, though, the board enacted some changes to what is issued or rose, or when we saw that it could be improved, like by making the set aside provision apply to subdivisions without houses, creating units to be smaller, so on, if they provided 80% of the square foot of his market, or so, a few other changes. So this is, these are a few amendments that arose in the course of the board's review of more recent proposals. It's got several sections. The first two are just, you know, just cleaning up language or clarifying language. Then there's this, the change on reduced lot size is made to clarify what's there. And we read it, and it's really not... So we made it easier to understand what it says in one-family residence districts, if you could build an affordable house on 75% of the lot size. So if you've got a 10,000 square foot lot, if it's a 10,000 square foot district, you've got 7,500 square feet, you could build an affordable house on it. It also says that if you've got a 10,000 square foot lot, you could build a two-family house. And then this, then a provision was added that in two-family districts, you could build a two-family house on 75% of the lot size. Right now, when a two-family district's minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet, so if you have 3,750 square feet, you could build a two-family house. Or if you've got a 5,000 square foot lot, you could build a three-family. So it's a bit of a bonus for affordable units. And then a new provision was added, which wasn't in before because we don't, assisted living facilities aren't permitted use in the village, but it's come up a few times. It was one of the recommendations of the comprehensive plan update. And so a provision was added that in an affordable, assisted living facilities, that 5% of the assisted living units have to be affordable for 50 years. Alternatively, the board could permit that requirement to be not satisfied by payment into the Affordable Housing Fund of an amount that the board trustees would determine what would be the value of that. And then the next change is just makes the density provisions consistent with the set aside decibel law.
And I think the one reason that we looked at the assisted living piece of it is because it's unique use, that doesn't necessarily, setting aside 10% affordable in an assisted living facility can be problematic, because what is the cost? It's $4,000 a month or $5,000 a month on average. How much of that is housing versus care and all those types of things? So I think it's a very difficult, it's a difficult thing to...
It's why we made the number smaller, because the usual set aside, the usual set aside is 10%. So for assisted living facilities, it's 5% because of this.
And there's so much common space and, you know, dementia care versus regular, you know, it just, it's, and some of the other sample laws we looked at, this was kind of how they kind of solved for that issue. And at the end of the day, what we want to do is increase the Affordable Housing Fund. So, you know, obviously money can help us achieve that goal as well.
Brian, maybe you could just clarify a little bit about the difference between independent living and assisted living units, and they could...
If they were independent living units, they're dwelling units, and they would be, they would have to meet the 10% set aside requirement.
They didn't have a kitchen, is my understanding.
Right, but assisted living facilities aren't dwelling units under the code because they're not complete housekeeping facilities for one family, because they usually don't have kitchens. As opposed to if you had an assisted living facility that had kitchens, then that definition of dwelling units is different. They don't.
That's a good point. And, you know, I think the only comments we've received on this proposed law for tonight were from a member of the Housing Committee, who, his objections were basically he wanted us to do more. So I know there's some members of the committee here tonight as well, so I'm pleased to hear from them as well as the public. But my proposal to Larry, depending on what we hear tonight, if we do move ahead passing this, I would like to ask the Housing Committee to come to our next work session, the next Wednesday, and maybe talk about other developments that they'd like to see. Because to me, a lot of this is just, we should have had, you know, kind of the other, the two-family included in our original law, with kind of oversight, because we just started the counties, you know, the counties law.
I do believe you agree the county laws requiring that, but it's just not clear.
I agree. To me, there isn't, you know, a lot of, a lot of this is just kind of, kind of cleaning up the law to me. The assisted living piece is obviously...
That's new, yeah. The rest of it is really clarified.
Yeah. And also on the board.
Yeah, I just had one thing, because I asked the question by email, but I wasn't here. I answered, but I was a little confused, and maybe I shouldn't be, maybe I'm just not thinking about it right, but under Section 5, where it's talking about the density factor, and it says in the added language about the density factor in single-family and two-family districts shall be reduced by 25% for each pair in affordable dwelling. So if it's a two-family dwelling, is that considered two dwellings or one dwelling that's two-family? I'm a little bit confused about how to interpret that last phrase, because you said I'm saying that...
So when you do your psych capacity analysis, you figure out how many affordables can there be there? And so if it's a two-family district, you've got a 10,000 square, let's say if you've got, yeah, if you've got a 10,000 square foot lot, you divide it by the density factor, which is 5,000, it means you could build two. But let's give a better example. If it's 3750 square feet, if you divided that by 5,000, you couldn't build anything.
No, I understand.
But, because it's less than one. But if you've got 3750 square feet, the 3750 divided by 3750 is one, and you have a capacity equal one.
And then what about the three-family unit?
That has to be on a full-size lot. So you're not going to have the same density then. You can have one, you can have, you can have one house. It means you can have one two-family house on it. And then that other provision says that if you've got a full-size lot of 5,000 square feet, you can have a three-family instead of a two-family. This is really, this will account for, when you're doing it, accounts to allow for smaller lot sizes.
I understand the intention, I just wasn't sure if it was, it seems to work with one and two-family dwellings, but I was confused with the three-family that actually worked.
I think it's not.
Can I just mark board?
Yeah, I had a quick question about the, right now, am I correct in that there does not exist an Affordable Housing Development Fund, that that's something that will be put into existence when this passes?
That's correct.
And is there any other funding source to this Affordable Housing Development Fund other than an assisted living write-off?
No, there isn't currently.
Okay. And the idea would be to build up enough in that fund so that perhaps the village might be able to help to fund a small-time development, a write-off.
I think this is in the right direction, and I like your idea of asking the Housing Commission to come in and think of other things beyond this that might make our community more affordable.
Please, go ahead and ask the public.
If you are considering passing this tonight, I'm wondering about a few items in the assisted living facility verbiage that are rather vague, such as the minimum of 50 years and the amount of a payment to be determined, and that's very open to interpretation, doesn't really...
Well, the minimum of 50 years, that's the same language that's in the code about for one family. So minimum is, you know, if they want to make it affordable for 100 years, that's fine, but it has to be, I doubt anybody would, but I need to go for what. But, so the minimum is 50. As to, yes, and I know what you're saying about the amount, because you can't put a dollar amount on it. When it happens, you're going to have to somehow determine what the value of it would be.
Clearly, you can't put a dollar amount, but you could have some sort of a percentage, I would think, of some value, whether it's the market value or...
Well, no, but what you would do, I mean, if you were calculating, I would think, you would, you would see what the cost of, see what the cost of the unit is. No, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Back into what's affordable, and by affordable, you would use the county's standard. So, and I think we use the 80%. So let's say we said it could only cost, you know, you could pay, I'll just make up a number, you know, $2,000 a month for it to be affordable. So then the difference, I guess, the difference between what they're getting and how much they would be able to get is the market rate.
Is what would be paid into the fund?
That's, that's the calculation.
What period of time?
The 50-year period, the 50-year period. No.
No, no, no. The question was, when is that paid in? It's paid in upon...
It's calculated over 50 years.
Yeah, it's calculated over a window of time, but...
You know what, it's not, it's not really easy, and I imagine it's the sort of thing that the board would also, you know, figure out what's there and, you know, come up with the, if you're not going to do it there, what's a fair amount to, instead of providing, let's say, four affordable units, you know, you do, you're four affordable units, you're doing an 80-unit thing. This is what the value is, and you just can't put a dollar amount on it. We did fool around some numbers.
Yeah. If I could just make one quick comment on this. So we definitely went back and forth when we were trying to craft this law about the idea of putting a hard and fast formula in there versus keeping it more open-ended. As you can see from the draft, they opted to go with the open-ended, partly because we felt that the risk was that any formula that we put in there might actually be too limiting for future boards. You're coming at it from a different angle of, hey, what happens if a future board doesn't do the right thing and doesn't ask for enough money and doesn't, you know, and undercuts it, so to speak? That's what we're trying to balance out here, but we felt that it would be more limiting to have a formula that would cap it and could cap it when conditions might be very different, if the real estate market is different, if the variety of subsidies that's available might be different in the future. This approach would give us the flexibility to do the right thing at the time. Again, that's what feedback's for, but that's where we're...
I was in Scarsdale, the ambassador in Scarsdale, because I thought they had four units set aside, so I was talking to the director there to see how they determine what the affordable thing is, and then...
Right. I understand that, I just, I mean, also from a developer's point of view, they're trying to come in and build something and having something so nebulous to try to work into a budget, but I guess this would be an early part of the negotiations or discussion.
They'll know soon enough.
Can somebody explain to me what the motivation was for adopting the idea of the developer instead of having an assured four units at the assisted living facility, that instead giving them the option to pay into a fund, which then, I think, puts the village in the position of developing affordable housing and perhaps not having the funds necessary to develop those four units or whatever it is. So my understanding is there aren't, there's just a couple of other municipalities within Westchester County that actually has adopted, have adopted this method, and I'm just trying to understand what the motivation was for the village to do so. Because instead of having four assured units in this assisted living facility, you have people paying into a bank, but maybe not enough money to develop four other units, standalone units.
Actually, I don't know that there's any place in Westchester that has a similar requirement. There are some in Connecticut. Scarsdale required them to be set aside in the ambassador, but that was a condition of their approval, not, it's not in their laws, not in the Brooklyn Health and Law. The question is still...
And I, I mean, I think to me, it's a question of, again, it's that the average assisted living facility is $5,000 a month. How much of that is housing versus how much of that is, you know, the person that comes in and makes sure, you know, like, to me, it's just, it's a hard, and like saying, 80% of that price, you know, is that, and if in, you know, 10 years, that's $10,000, and you say, well, you can only charge, you know, 80% of that, to me, it's not necessarily, I don't know if it necessarily works well. And I think I've heard that from some of my colleagues in Scarsdale, they're not sure how that's working now and how it's going to work. And I don't think the developer particularly liked it too much either. And we just thought that, you know, with the, kind of the lieu of payments, it's something that we've talked about, and something else we want to talk about with our Housing Committee. Hastings obviously has a model where they're much more proactive, and they develop small-time projects. So I don't think, you know, I don't envision this being, we're going to develop, you know, 150-unit type of development, but I could see it on a much smaller scale, you know, maybe something on Main Street or off Main Street, that type of thing. You know, that's what I envisioned, and the money wouldn't be that big if you said, you know, we're going to take the money from this and get some grant money and some money from the county, and kind of, I think you could have it add up relatively quickly. You know, maybe not, maybe we wouldn't get four units, maybe we get three, I don't know what the logistics would be. But, you know, I think that's a lot of the negotiation that would happen.
And haven't we discovered that a developer is not very inclined to take on a very small project and develop just one or two, whereas with this fund, we would have the flexibility to do that? So that was part of the thinking, at least on my part.
Excuse me, since this is a public hearing, could I ask that people use the microphone so that the public can hear what is being said? Because if you have your back to us, we have no idea what is being said. Thank you.
Good point. Karen.
Come and use the microphone now. I understand we can get out. We can pass it to you. I'll get out. Karen.
Hi, my name is Chet Kaur. I just had two questions to follow up on some of this stuff. And one is, if in trying to assess the monetary amount you're using based on what it would otherwise be if they were livable units, is there, in Part A, it says, must be affordable to a household whose income does not exceed 80% of the AMI. Is there currently a formula to determine if that's your, if your income is less than 80% of the AMI, what then makes it affordable? That's one question. So in other words, is there already an existing mechanism, either in the county law or whatever, to do that calculation? That's one question. And then, and if I understand correctly...
The answer to that is yes.
Yeah, I think it's...
The county gets it all the time.
Yes, yes.
And is that, so is that just assumed to be part of what our new ordinance would be, you know, where you would look to that county law to determine that?
As we would now, yeah, with just regular affordable units, sit on an assisted, same formula.
And then my other question is, is, I think I heard you say that this would not apply to independent living facilities?
No, because independent living facilities would have the 10% set aside because they're regular houses, regular, um, single-family dwell.
And so if you had a combination, independent living and assisted living, you would make the determination for the portion of that development that's independent living, require the 10% set aside, and then have this other mechanism available to the assisted living. Is that my understanding?
Exactly.
Great, thank you very much.
Could you use the microphone?
Yeah, I'll use the microphone. There you go.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Board. My name is Seth Mandelbaum with the Law Firm of McCullough, Goldberg, and Stoudt in White Plains. We represent LCB Senior Living, who are the contract vendees for the property at 76 North Broadway, which is one of the parcels that I think we'll be talking about on the second public hearing, which I'll, will also be commenting on. With me this evening, I have Lee Blum, who's Director of Development for LCB Senior Living, Pat Cleary of Cleary Consulting, a planning consultant that has been retained by LCB, and my associate Amanda Brozi. We have some brief comments on our proposed amendments to the affordable law as it pertains to assisted living facilities, and many of the comments I have on behalf of my client are related to some of the things the mayor has said and the... of my client are related to some of the things the mayor has said and the public and the statutes have said. So I think we can put a number on, on that question of what percentage of the monthly payment for an assisted living unit is services versus rent, for lack of a better term, and it's about sixty-five to seventy percent typically is for services, because it's such an intensive care as compared to fifty-five and older or independent living senior facility. And, and as the mayor alluded to, that makes it a lot more complicated to try to figure out. If you go to the chart that Mary Ann mentioned on the county website, it's pretty straightforward if it's just a senior facility. I, I represent a client that just built a senior facility in Eastchester, and there's an affordable component. You go across the chart to eighty percent, the number of people, the number of bedrooms, and the rent is literally set forth, the rent you cannot exceed for that unit, for an affordable unit, is set forth in the county, on the county website that's updated. It really comes from HUD, from the federal government, and the county puts that chart out every year. It's much more complicated, as, as we've heard, for, for assisted living, and, and the concept, and Lee will talk about this a little bit on the, the second public hearing, for 76 North Broadway would have zero independent living units. It would be all assisted living or memory care, which is a higher level of care than, than assisted living. So from, from our perspective, even the five percent becomes problematic to, to budget for and to, to work into a facility of some number of units, and we'll talk, again, in a few minutes about the, what makes sense for a facility like this. And in addition, typically, and Lee works a lot up in, in Massachusetts and New England, and their company is excited about expanding down to Westchester, but they, they have seen other places, a density bonus, where affordable units have been provided, to kind of account for that, that difference, if there was an affordable component. They also do appreciate the flexibility that the payment-in-lie provision provides, but we're also concerned about there being no real metric for the cost of a unit or a formula that's more objective. So we share a concern that, that we heard from the first speaker about sort of kicking that down the road to, to a negotiation, so to speak, as opposed to having a metric in there. So, again, for budgeting purposes, they kind of know what they're walking into. So those are our, our comments for your consideration on the first law, and you'll hear, I think, a lot more from us on, on the second public hearing. So thank you for your consideration.
Brian, can I just respond on that? Because I think, I think it, it might not be clear. This says that the, and it's based on the ambassador model in Scarsdale, not just the housing part of it has to be affordable. If you were saying just the housing part of it had to be affordable, then it would be the ten percent set aside. It's, the unit has to be affordable, including the services, which is why the number's five percent instead of the ten percent we have otherwise in the count. And that's how, that's how, that's how it works in Scarsdale. So they take the, how much they can afford, and that's how much the rent is per month in, in the unit, including services.
Which is only eighteen hundred or two thousand, depending on the size of the unit, on, on that county chart, so...
Yeah, I, I, I...
Maybe we'll talk about it more in the last line.
The number, the number was greater than the amount that they're paying.
The delta becomes pretty large.
But that's why the payment-in-lie also works in that scenario. We've done that before.
Exactly.
I believe with LCB, and I think, I think you may even call it one of the...
Westport, yes.
Right, exactly, and we actually worked with a local housing development fund. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you have a lot of comments or just...
Right.
It's up to you, come on. Lee does this for a living, so he's, with his input.
All right, Lee Blum with LCB Senior Living, and Seth was actually correct, and you're all accurate in what you're saying, that it is the service component that ends up open-ended. You're coming to a community, you need an hour of, of, you know, personal care, and then all of a sudden, in six months, you need seven or eight hours of personal care, and the rent stays flush, which is a real challenge economically. The payment-in-lie works, and in Westport, Connecticut, we actually worked with a local housing development fund, not town-sponsored, but we collaborated with them. They had a list of clients, that they helped subsidize mortgages or rents. We contributed a million dollars to them. It was a hundred-unit community we developed down there on four acres, and they then lent in pers, and in Connecticut, there are state statutes, so they get points if they're affordable, and they need, determined they needed four points from our project. The million dollars allowed this fund to go purchase two homes and occupy them with families at the appropriate rates, and they were able to get those points. So...
Yeah.
Understanding that it's a challenge and, and having a contribution in the world is great and works, it's really getting down to, to what that is. So, thank you.
And just for the purpose of the local paper, he did not just commit a million dollars in his funding necessarily.
We are with 76 North Broadway. What piece is on Maxon?
The first one, yeah. Oh, it's, it'll make more sense.
Any other public comment on this one?
Anybody else from the committee? I just...
We guess, we guess, we ready to vote on this one?
Well... How far back are the buildings now that are going to be with the last in the U.
Yeah, we'll talk about that in the next session.
So this whole issue about how subsequent boards who would have to determine this amount with no metrics is, I don't know the answer. I know we struggled with it once, and we went with this route, and maybe it's the best that we went with, because it's so hard, but would every board be well-meaning?
I just don't understand what the, I mean, the, the metric is, there's not some complicated metric here.
Okay.
The county tells you what's affordable to somebody at the eight percent there, and that's how much rent is affordable. So if they say it's $5,000 a month they can afford, then the rent can't be higher than $5,000 a month.
But how much gets put into this fund?
Well, that's the thing, that's the thing that I'm talking about. But I mean, how, how, how do you put in a, I mean, how do you put a number in that money?
That's what I don't know.
I mean, I, I, I guess it, I mean, you sort of, I think you can't law, you know, giving discretion to the board, assuming that a board is gonna use its discretion then, that the public, you know.
I mean, if our com...
There's not a law to give discretion.
That's true. If our comprehensive plan says that one of our main goals in this village is to create more affordable housing, then a board usually follows what's in that comprehensive plan and doesn't go against it. So if that's a bit of a measure of control, then it makes me feel a little bit...
Not sure.
My name is Kathy Fisher. I just have a question with the assisted living at Maxon. I thought that land had to be multi-use, and we were gonna change the zoning, but this sounds like it's already a foregone conclusion.
It's not, it's not even close.
Okay.
It's like, it's like we haven't changed the zoning yet. This is our first public hearing, and these zoning changes, we probably have multiple meetings. I know everyone's here tonight, and I hope to keep coming back, but on the zoning change, not to get ahead of ourselves. We're gonna have multiple meetings, the first time we spoke about it.
Excuse me, I just wanna, I wanna back up. I might like to piggyback on that. It's just that he said that they own that parcel, and they're gonna be developing...
Just to clarify, I say contract vendee, which means they're under contract to buy it, but they do not own that parcel, just to be clear.
Okay.
They've signed the contract of sale...
But there's a process.
But there's a, that's contingent upon approval for that use, as, as these deals usually are, just to be clear.
Is there anybody who can turn the air conditioning on, Larry?
Yes. Thank you.
Oh, sure. I'll second that. We don't know the answer. It's beautiful outside, yeah. Right? Yeah.
I don't know why they do it. I mean, that's why we didn't do it, you can figure it out.
I think it's our part of the negotiation, whatever the special permit terms are.
Are we doing special permits?
No, we're not talking about special permits.
Mary Ann, who, who actually negotiates the...
The board of trustees, the details of the affordability requirement are spelled out in the plan, the plan, that plan has to be approved by the board of trustees, and it also says...
The affordability requirement.
The board of trustees may prevent the affordability, affordability requirements being met by a...
And I'm happy with that. The rest, the planning board is dealing with...
Yeah, the, the planning board would grant the special permit for, under the proposed zoning for ad front of use, but this particular requirement would have...
The affordable requirement. We're still in control of it. Okay, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
You guys okay with that? I'll make a motion to oppose the public hearing, if I have a second. All in favor? Aye. Folks, do you want to talk about secret here? Do you want to just talk about secret?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I've got the environmental assessment form, and it wouldn't... And you see on page two, go through that, none of the, there'd be no strong sex, so I think, I think, I mean, I assume the board worked through it, and that being placed right...
Would this be any different than when we did our, would it be any different than when we did our original affordable housing code? It seems like it's...
The only thing I guess arguably you should say is it could be a little bit more density, because now we're saying two-family, you can have a group family, but at, at most, that's a minimal impact, which comes to, comes to no impact on the, on the EAF, so you'd be able to make that, because other than that, it can't be, it's the, it's the EAF.
And everything else is being dealt with, everything else is being mitigated during site plan approval.
Yeah, most, most of it has nothing to do with it, this, this is, I'm not talking about the rezoning, I'm talking about the affordability, right, it's like virtually no environmental impact.
Except for the paper that we're using.
Right. Right. No, we can't, no, we can't visual.
So Brian, just to clarify, you closed the public hearing on the affordable housing. Did we just vote on that?
We haven't voted yet.
No, you just proposed it, we didn't vote on.
No.
And then your assumption would be that we would call for a vote on the Affordable Housing Amendment tonight?
Correct. Now that we went over the secret.
We've gone over that.
And then the second phase is we're gonna ask the housing committee to come in...
To come in to add things.
Yeah, because I think that was the objection.
This is the foundation.
That was the objection we had.
And updating what...
Yes.
It's done with the one family now, two fam, okay, all right.
We have to accept the secret.
It's gonna be part of the resolution.
Oh, we have to, we have to vote on the secret?
Yeah, well, it's a part of the same resolution. It's in the same resolution. Whereas, adoption of the local law amending the fair and affordable housing provisions of zoning code is an unlisted action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and the board of trustees has determined that such adoption will have no negative environmental impacts. Now therefore be it resolved, that negative declaration of a secret be issued, and further resolved to adopt the local law amending the fair and affordable housing provisions of zoning code. I'll make a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Next up is, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing to consider a local law amending the urban zoning code to create the North Broadway next to the Houston District. I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
The public hearing is now open. I think you give some background, I'll give some background. Where this came from is the Comprehensive Plan Act.
This we just won an award for.
There was a committee of, I think fourteen people or sixteen people were on the Broadway rezoning committee, for lack of a better term. They came up with recommendations, and I think the overlying arc there was we have been responsive to developers coming in and telling us what they want in that, that zone. We actually were happy we had nothing in front of us when we had kind of a blank sheet of paper to talk about uses that we thought would be appropriate, or that, that group of volunteers thought would be appropriate. They came back to the overall Comprehensive Plan Committee with their, with their recommendations, and then that was voted on by that committee and then this committee as well, this board of trustees as well, in accepting the comprehensive plan. So that was like a, I don't know, almost a two-year, two-year process for the comprehensive plan, being updated. You know, I think also, I think the biggest thing we wanted to be was, you know, saying this is what, because we got, some developers said, we don't think you want to develop anything there, and we said, you're, you're right, we don't know what we want to develop there, we don't know what's appropriate there, so that's why it was such a big portion of the comprehensive plan, it was a zone, separate group that had, you know, multiple hearings. Then we took those and we said, you know, this is zoning, so zoning is, to me, very abstract. When I read something, when I read coverage or FAR or any of those things, I don't know what it means. I don't know what it means visually, like, so a great example is the Continuum Project. If someone had read it to me, it probably would have been fine. It wasn't until I saw drawings and walked the property that, to me, it was too big. I know people disagreed with me, but that's the only way I can do it. So we needed a, a planner to come and help us. What does it mean to have this amount of coverage, or this amount of coverage? And if we say, you want to support affordable housing, we're gonna give extra coverage, what does that mean to the visual impacts? What does that mean to potential traffic impacts, all those things? So we had a process, I think we had, what, three presentations, where our poor planner had to come back, but we asked more and more questions. We'd said we needed more visuals, we needed, we wanted to talk about, you know, different coverage and things like that as well. So those meetings have happened in the last six months, enough, five months?
No, last two months, really.
So the presentations have been in the last two months anyway. And then we said, take the yeoman's task of trying to create a potential zoning code, which is never easy, never mind when you're adding potential uses. Again, that came out of the comprehensive plan, and that's kind of where we are tonight. That's kind of the short version. Taking from our public parking on Main Street changes, we, we anticipate this being a long process of multiple public input. We think our parking plan came out much better because we had multiple public hearings. So I know that there was an email going around, this is your only chance to speak, and I'm apologizing if that's what you thought, but you're gonna, you know, there's gonna be multiple meetings, because I'm guessing we didn't nail this right out of the gate the way everybody wants. But I think the, one of the realities to me is, I think everyone would say it would be great if nothing ever changed there, but what we've seen in the last, you know, five years, it's almost every one of those properties has been for sale and/or sold and/or multiple times. So things are changing there. We have our big lawn there right now, you know, and I think that that's, we've all, we've been to multiple meetings for each one of those sales. So rather than having, you know, a, a contract vendee come in and say, this is what we want to do, and here's the zoning we want, because we can't do what we want to do, and now you have to react to this, and as a board, we could just say, we don't want to hear from you, get out, but we never think that that's in the best interest of the village, because if there's a plan that we think is gonna be good for the village or potentially good for the village, we have to hear that out. So that's led to multiple-year hearings typically. So again, this, this process was to eliminate that, not to say, here's a blank slate, you know, this, this use is currently X, it's on a, kind of a vague special permit and things like that. Make it, bring it out to the light, discuss it, find out what the, the public wants in that area, because, you know, I don't think that all single-family homes there is necessarily the best use for that property. There are people that disagree, but, you know, some of the plans we saw where they just kind of dredged out everything and put in four-million-dollar homes, to me, wasn't necessarily the best use of that. So, again, that's where we are now. Mary Ann, I don't know if you have anything to add, or Larry, or anyone on the board wants to kind of, you know, kind of go over the history piece of it.
So that brings us to this public hearing with this proposed law that we'll talk about, and I guess our planner is gonna present...
Yes.
Some of the background, so people, I mean, we've had several meetings on this, and we've seen it publicly here a few times, not this exact, but part of first presentation. But for many people, this is probably the first time that they're seeing anything, so it'll be helpful. And, and Mary Ann will discuss the actual proposal? I don't know, the order you want to do things.
I think Ashley is, the only thing I would want to add is that, that the point of tonight is to hear what the people in the area, what the property owners there have to say, we took a crack at it, and, and as, as Brian said, not to, not to be reactive, but to be proactive, and so that people shouldn't get upset that this is anywhere near cast in stone.
No, and I'd also like to say for the record, I live on Riverview Road afterward the exit for Abbott House is, just for the record. Ashley, do you want to start?
Sure.[1774.13]
Sure. So, so as the mayor said, this is the initial look at the rezoning for the area. It builds on the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, but we're here to hear your feedback on the uses and the dimensions that are being proposed. So this is the rezoning area, this is the area that was identified in the comprehensive plan as the, the North Broadway rezoning area. It's an area that's currently all zoned 1F40. Here's an overview of the topography of that area. As you can see, it slopes up from Broadway up to a Noel on the Holy Spirit site.
Explain what the lines mean.
Sorry. So the lines are the, the topography. The purple is areas of steep slopes. The blue along the top is a wetland corridor. So this site, while it's, there are areas of steep slopes, there are no wetlands that are leased federally or D E C mapped wetlands, there may be some local wetlands.
Which is Broadway?
Broadway is on the left side. It's the straightest line in red. And so the areas that are in purple are areas that are steep slopes greater than 25 percent. So those are the areas that currently under your code are fairly unbuilt. This is an overview of all the properties that would be involved in the rezoning area. The Maxon site is identified as Lot 1, the former Brighton New Proposal site is identified as Lot 2. Lot 3 is that brick building right on Broadway with the white porch. In the back, there's Lot 5, which is the Holy Spirit property, and Lot 6 is Abbott House. In between the Maxon property and the Abbott House, there's a residential, there's a residential house there, and that is proposed to not be rezoned, or to either stay 1F40 or be rezoned back to 1F20, which is what it was about five years ago.
You're talking about Lot 4?
Um, no.
No, oh, that's numbered, right.
The one that looks sort of like Idaho there.
Yeah, okay, got you, right.
What's 20 and what's 40?
What is that?
Oh, so 1F40 is basically a one acre zone, and a 1F20 is a, is a half acre zone. So this is a general overview of what's included in the proposed zoning. It establishes a new mixed-use zoning district. The new uses are based on the recommendations that were included in the comprehensive plan. So it includes multifamily and townhomes, assisted living, boutique hotels, office, research and design, full-service restaurants, places of worship, membership clubs, bed and breakfast, and small practice medical office. Every single use that would be allowed in this zone would be a special permit use.
Can you define research and design?
So that is a current use that's allowed in, in your code. I don't have another definition.
You mean a research facility or an architectural...
It's not, it goes...
Business. It's only a property, is that right?
Yes.
Education?
Yes, basic and educational use. There is a proposed definition of boutique hotels, and that would be a small luxury hotel, not less than 10, and not more than 100 rooms, offering enhanced level of services with unique accommodations. There's been some discussion amongst the village board members about what the cap on that would be, and right now it's proposed as 100, that's based on a pretty standard definition, that's certainly flexible, it could be lower.
I'll Google this.
What is a special permit use? So a special permit use is a use that requires an extra level of review. So it's a use that needs to meet certain performance standards in order to be approved, and it would be, it would have to go through the village board.
No, it would go through the planning board.
Sorry, through the planning board.
And you, you'll go through the standards later for?
Yes.
So of these uses, which ones are currently called out in the code as, as none of them that are currently available for permit use?
Right, so the, the new uses, where the newly defined uses would be boutique hotel, community amenities, which is, would be an accessory use to some of the uses, medical office, small practice, which would be defined as office of a medical professionals licensed to practice under the education law of the state of New York, occupying a maximum of 5,000 square feet and having a staff of not more than four employees, including all licensed medical professionals on the premises at any given time. There's also a proposed definition of medical office large practice, but that would not be permitted in this zoning district. So medical office, small practice, that's your, your standard, you know, family doctors, very small group practice, dentist, not a care mouse.
I think Mark was asking which of those are now, which of those are new uses?
Or conversely, which ones are existing uses?
Yes, places of worship, what's allowed now are places of worship, membership clubs, bed and breakfast.
Right.
The others, the others are not listed as permitted uses, although some of them are there by various...
Offices.
Or pre-existing uses.
Office is allowed, has a variance to operate there currently.
So it's a use that exists there now, but it's not listed as a permitted use in that district. And, and one of the, part of the recommendation of the comprehensive plan committee was to legalize the uses that are there now, because it kind of liked what was there now, with a mix of stuff to do that, plus permit some other uses.
Are there constraints on the full-service restaurants?
You mean how big or what type?
It would be limited by the dimensional regulations that are proposed, and as one of the requirements is that it can't, none of the uses can cause an excessive increase in traffic that can't be mitigated. The proposed, other sections that are proposed are, it builds on the existing resource protection measures in your zoning code, which, which means that when an applicant comes in, they would first have to do a survey, they'd have to identify all of the sensitive natural areas, and those would be deducted from the total site area. So all residential development would be required to prepare a resource protection analysis for Article 25, in terms of the existing section of your code, and building coverage for all development would be based on the net buildable site area, which is also for Article 25. So even if you had, let's say, a 10 acre lot, if you had a lot of sensitive natural areas, steep slopes, wetlands on that site, that could potentially cut the size of your lot down to, let's say, 75 percent of that 10 acres, and then you would only be able to allow to have building coverage that was based on that smaller size. And I'll, I have some diagrams this week, I'll get a little further into it to explain this more. The maximum building coverage would be 20 percent, and the maximum lot coverage would be 30 percent. There would be bonuses available for the adaptive reuse of historic property. The maximum FAR would be .25, and there would also be a bonus available for adaptive reuse of historic properties. And I'll get into the definition of FAR.
And one other question, who's defining what historic property is?
That would be based on, I believe it's the architecture review board. So for any buildings that the architecture review board determines to be a local historic, they can't against...
Which is the, the standard we have now in multifamily.
Thank you.
So another element of the code, of the proposed zoning is a minimum setback of 250 feet from Broadway for a two-story building, and a 300-foot setback for a three-story building. So it's a pretty significant setback. It also, proposed zoning includes sign regulations and flexible parking regulations. I'm going to be getting into diagrams on the next slide, and I'll go over what those setbacks mean on each individual lot.
Are there setbacks in the other roads?
Yes, 75 feet. So gross floor area is the gross floor area over the lot area. So the gross floor area is your, is the horizontal floor area of all floors in a building, including portions of attics and basements that are designed for and suitable as living space, and that's the area that's divided by the total lot area, which is measured from property line to property line. So your gross floor, your floor area ratio would be based on the entire lot size, unlike the building coverage, which would be based on that smaller number.
Does that mean, that just means you can't build out to the end of the property line?
It establishes the density for the lot. So here on this slide, we have a couple examples of what that means. This is a potential configuration of .25 FAR with a maximum of 20 percent building coverage, and this is six different ways that you could fit that on a site. So you could have a one and a half story building, or sorry, one and a quarter story building that covers 20 percent of the lot, or you could have a smaller two-story building, or even, an even smaller three-story building that only covers 8.33 percent of the lot. So there's a couple, there's many different ways that this could be worked. And the idea with using FAR is to allow flexibility in how that building is situated on the site.
What about like parking lots or roads and sidewalks? Like, does that tuck it in?
So all of your road, sidewalks, parking lots would fall under lot coverage. One of the benefits of having a smaller lot coverage and a, like a slightly disproportionate FAR is it encourages you to go up instead of out. So up, when you have such large properties, you can go up farther back on the site, because we have a setback of 250 feet, and then it's encouraging you to have either surface parking that's farther away from the road, or potentially underground parking.
One more question.
Yes.
What is the setback from the private property not Broadway?
So under the existing zoning, the existing FAR on each of the sites that, as it's currently built out, ranges from .08 FAR, which is the, I think that's the Holy Spirit property, up to .09, and that's the former Brighton New Proposal property, in terms of what's currently on those sites. So the potential build out under the proposed zoning, you could potentially get, it really depends on your lot size. So Lot 3 and Lot 4, which are the, were the properties just to the north, let's see what happens here. Lot 3 and Lot 4 are at the very top. Those would essentially be built out under the proposed zoning. The existing buildings that are on those sites are, would max, max out the development. It's kind of hard for you to see in the back, but the setback from Broadway, the two, the 300-foot setback, basically comes almost to the end of the property line of Lot 3. So it's pretty far back. The 250-foot setback is just a little bit in from the back property line of Lot 3. So Lot 3 would essentially be zoned out of any new development. Lot 4 is such a small lot that development probably wouldn't be possible, but if anyone were to ever come in and redevelop Lot 5, that, Lot 4 and Lot 5 are owned by the same people, so that could potentially be access to a development on Lot 5. Lot 2 would allow some new development. As you can see, that current lot has quite a bit of development coverage on it today. So if you were to allow 25 percent lot coverage, which is one of the concepts that was discussed earlier with the board, it would be fairly difficult to fit any new surface parking in that area, in fact, you'd probably have to take some up. Lot 1, you would be able to fit a smaller building, some additional lot coverage. Lot 5, you could possibly fit up to two buildings, and Lot 6, you could probably fit one building. And this diagram that you have in front of you right now is the addition of one to two buildings per lot with the existing buildings remaining. So this is, I'm going to go through several diagrams that go over a couple different iterations of this.
Westbrook, is the entrance to all of this property Strawberry Road? What is the, what is the main road that gets to the...
The main road into the Abbott House property is from Strawberry, as is from, to the Maxon site. I mean, this is just a concept of what could potentially be built under this proposed zoning. Any developer that came in with a new concept would come up with their own plan, this is just...
But I mean, there's just one road that can get to those, those properties.
The Maxon site does have the potential for having access directly from Broadway.
From Broadway, it's either Broadway or Strawberry.
Right.
How far back are the buildings that are there now, those beautiful white buildings?
So the white building on the Brighton New Circuit?
I don't know which side, because I can't...
The big warehouse.
Terrificale?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That is a little over, that's probably about 350 feet back from Broadway, that white building, the Terrificale site. The brick building just south of the apartments is about 200 feet back, and the apartments just north of there are only about 25 to 50 feet back.
So 200 to 125, I thought it was 125.
It, I don't have that in front of me. It's, it might be closer to 150.
If they have that setback, would they be parking in front of that on the setback park?
No, so there would be no parking allowed in the front yard setback. This is another concept layout, if you were to go up to 30 percent lot coverage, and another concept if you were to go up to 35 percent lot coverage. As you can see, it gives a little bit more flexibility on a lot like Lot 2. One of the issues with Lot 2 is that the back of that lot is fairly steeply sloped, and so based on that build-out analysis that I spoke of earlier, that determined the net buildable site area, that essentially cuts the acreage of that lot in half. This is a concept that shows the maximum building coverage and FAR are all new construction. These buildings would mostly be one and two-story buildings, so instead of going up, you'd be going out. It's probably more likely that a developer would choose to go up.
I'm sorry, would you explain what's what, what colors are what?
Yes, I'm sorry. So the brown color is the building coverage, and the gray color would be your surface parking. You can see on the brown, there's a dash line through some of the buildings, that shows where that break in the, in the height of the building would be. If it was going to be like a one and a half story building, it would be, basically, you have your first half of the building would be maybe one story or two stories, the back half of the building could go up another story. And that's to max out the FAR. This is the coverage going up to 30 percent, and the coverage going up to 35 percent. This is the last example, and it shows the maximum height and FAR, all new construction. Again, the brown is the building, the gray is the lot coverage. This is starting off with a lot coverage of 25 percent. This assumes all three-story buildings. Lot coverage of 30 percent, and lot coverage of 35 percent.
So I'm sorry, again, you said Lot 3 and 4, there will be no building on, they're too small?
They're too small.
Okay, so they stay...
They would stay as...
Green land, or...
Well, they would stay as they're currently developed. There's buildings on those buildings right now, they could potentially be adaptively reused, but it would be unlikely that they'd be torn down.
And they're the ones that, like, the apartments?
Yes.
Being co-ops?
Yes.
Somebody could buy the properties and...
Terrificale.
Big thing, right?
Somebody could potentially buy all the lots and merge the lot lines, yes, that's, that's always a possibility.
So could you, could this be turned into like Lawrence Street, but that was like an upstairs now?
Maybe with Lawrence Street.
It's where the movie theater was put in, and down there.
Restaurants.
Restaurants.
River Town Square. No, I don't think so. The development potential isn't designed, for this area isn't designed to be a downtown type density.
A 100-unit hotel is pretty dense, you're going to have people coming in.
We don't actually think you could ever, that was literally the definition, we looked in Google, we said, what the heck's a boutique hotel? If that makes you, if the 100 people, it's caught on the 100, it literally was the definition of a boutique hotel. I'd cap it at 50, 30, 20, whatever number you have, if you're comfortable. I don't think you can actually make it a 100-unit hotel, they'd have to be very small. When someone was talking about the big White House, or the big White Building, that was going to be about 35 units, when there's, someone looking at it, they thought they could make 35 to 40 units, to give you a sense.
And then even if we do this, it doesn't stop the developers from coming in here and saying, you know, we want to build the Empire State Building, we need to give us...
I think what it does is, right now, they look in our code and say, this doesn't say anything. There's all these uses there now that someone said in 1970s, do whatever you want. This will say, people spent, you know, two years on the comprehensive plan, another year and a half zoning this, so the bar's going to be really high to come in and say, I want to put in an amusement park. You know, so I think that's what we're trying to accomplish, is saying, this is what we decided as a community could potentially go here, and maybe boutique hotels are not something that should go there. I don't know, that's what we're here, that's what we're here to listen about tonight.
And another element of this code, which I haven't gotten into yet, was, it does include a number of design regulations that, and performance standards that would have to be met, to make sure that the style of the architecture meets the design that the village of Burlington is accustomed to.
We, we don't want to have River Town Square, whatever it's called.
Yeah.
It's not the goal.
So the next few slides that I'm going to go through are photo simulations of basically boxes, in terms of what could potentially be built on this site, just in terms of the massing, so the height, the density, not the design. A design would be proposed by an individual developer. So this is the corner of the Maxon site, existing conditions today. Under the bill note, so these photos were taken, obviously during a LEAP on condition, so the way that the... So, the way that the zoning is designed, it sets the building so far back from Broadway that it would be shielded by the trees that it currently exist. And then, as you went through the development approvals process, new landscaping would be required to be installed through site plan approval and special permit. You can see a little bit of blue shading behind where the telephone pole is. And on this slide, that dash box shows essentially the size of the box that would be allowed on that site. And that's a three-story box. Here's the existing conditions today, also the Maxon site. You can see there, right in the center of the photo, you can see the top of the building that's there today. In this photo, you can see the blue behind the trees. And again, in this photo, this is the size of the box that would be set further back. This is the Carafiallo property, and this is existing conditions.
Sorry, I live right across the street from that. And first of all, you're right, it's leafed out. And that is completely deceptive. I see Maxon, I see all their lights, I see their parking lot, I see every car in and out. It looked like it's completely blocked in that photo. And also, you're only showing, you're showing theirs. What you're not showing is that property is right across from a whole line of houses. There's about nine or 10 houses there. So, I don't know how you got those pictures, but they're not accurate.
So, those pictures were taken earlier this week, so obviously, it's LEAP ON condition. They were all taken from the side lot in the morning.
While we're down in my line of sight.
Of your upless story.
Yeah, I mean, there were various few locations in front of the Maxon building where you could see through the trees at this point in time. I'm sure during the winter that you could see significantly more.
And we get pictures from Strawberry Lane site, that's what you're referring to?
Yeah.
My house is right across Maxon on Strawberry. Agile, here and I have their houses. And I'm telling you, we can see the building, the parking lot, the cars, when the dumpster gets empty, everything. It looks like you can't see anything from that. It's a low wall, and it's pretty visible.
All right, so this is the Carafiallo property, existing conditions. Potential build-out, you can see the blue behind the trees. Again, it's because, if you're familiar with where that current driveway comes up, and there's a line of trees that kind of lines the driveway, the building wouldn't be allowed to start until behind that line of trees.
So, not where the current house is, lower than, where the current house is?
It could be potentially slightly in front of the current house, but not as close as where the driveway is, sort of in between that driveway and the current house. This dash box is about the outline of where that building would be. Also, the Carafiallo property, you can see the exit just below the tree line. The blue box, the reason it looks a little higher is because of the perspective here. If you were to look at a cut-through of this site, it would be, actually be at a lower elevation, but you're looking up a hill, and so it's blocking the view of the building behind it. And this dashed outline is what the limits of that building would be. So, this is the existing brick building, a little farther north on Broadway, that building would be expected to remain. And there would be no changes to the apartments just north as well, no changes to the zoning there. That's the end. Just a couple of the other items I wanted to point out regarding the parking requirements. There are, there would be specific parking requirements for each of the uses, but there also is the allowance for some flexible parking where, to discourage too much surface parking or surface parking that was oversized with the lot, the developer would be able to submit a parking study based on ULI or American Designing Association standard, shared parking methodology, and demonstrate what their need would be in that. So, you wouldn't end up with a sea of unused parking.
Behind the buildings?
It would be required to be behind the buildings or to the side of the building. It would not be allowed to be in the front yard.
Any underground?
Underground parking would be allowed, and parking decks would be permitted to be constructed, provided that they are fully shielded from view, from all public rights of way and neighboring property lines. Any parking deck shall be fully screened by a liner building or topography. Landscaping alone shall not be deemed, sorry, landscaping alone shall be deemed insufficient for screening purposes. So, if you're, a liner building is an actual building that would go around the parking lot. You could have housing units, assisted living, and basically, the entire part of the parking deck would have to be fully surrounded, so it would never be visible to many property lines. You wouldn't be, you wouldn't see decks of parking. Another comment that came up, I heard, was about lighting. And the zoning includes a dark sky compliant lighting requirement and a maximum foot handle level of five, which is fairly low. It's a residential-scale lighting.
So, my quick question to you about the parking, building, whatever you want to call it, parking facility built, site coverage but not counted in FAR, right? Because it's not habitable.
Correct. It's not habitable. So, the FAR would not include your parking deck, but it would be counted towards lot coverage.
All right, okay. Thank you.
Did you cover noise?
I'm sorry.
Did you cover noise?
There are no specific noise regulations related to the uses here. They would be governed by the overarching noise code that's already applicable within the village. Yes.
Any provisions for sidewalks on that side of Broadway?
There's not currently a requirement for sidewalks. But that's a, that's a good suggestion. One thing to consider is, in the comprehensive plan, it recommended keeping all the stone walls. So, we'd want to make sure that the stone walls would be able to maintain, be maintained.
So, as an aside to that, I mean, in our current configuration, you'd actually have to move the stone walls in order to get sidewalks along the east side. The Broadway corridor, right, design plan going forward, which could conceivably allow some buffer space to build sidewalks on the east side. But, yeah, it'd be great. So, the question is just, in my mind is, you know, do we wait to see where that goes, or do we require the existing walls to be moved, which is kind of high bar? I, just as I point out, there's a lot of new sidewalk being built on the east side of Broadway in Duff's Ferry, which is kind of interesting. They had the buffer area to build it. So, it's all from like, just past, what's the street at the top of the hill? Clinton. Down toward Alafont or whatever that street is. So, it's a large extent of sidewalk being constructed. I was driving by it today, thinking, "Boy, I wish we could be doing that here," but...
So, why don't we open it up, public comment?
I did want to just make it clear that Ashley has been hired by the village, and she works for us. Just to make it clear.
So, I have just two quick questions that I wanted to ask Marianne if I could, and this should be really quick. Subgrade spaces, like if you had facilities of some sort in a basement, that's FAR but not height, is that correct?
I'm not, you know, I'm not sure it's, I'm not sure it's FAR. It depends what it's being used for.
I mean, a movie theater, food preparation, and events.
If it's habitable, it would be FAR.
But it's not height.
It's not height.
Because the-
It's not height, but it would be stories. I don't know if this thing has a limitation on stories.
It does.
It does have stories. That would be a story, I think.
Sounds like a story to me, but I-
Yeah, so, that's a good point. You may want to-
I think we should allow subgrade facilities, but still have the height restriction that-
Yeah, I don't, you know, I don't have the code in front of me to see how story is defined, but whether it is above grade. But if it's, if it's not, if it includes even things below grade, you might want to, that could be-
Okay, that was one thing. The only other thing that I saw just in reading, because I was actually kind of impressed, I missed one cycle of discussion and update, so I was pretty happy with what I was reading. But there was a restriction against, in the design guidelines, against excessive amount of blank walls. And I just wanted to point out that in some locations, a blank wall would actually not be very offensive, such as the blank, the back of the building that, on the, of the white building, is right up against essentially a palisade. So, you know, there's certain areas where you could, better than actually trying to invest in windows looking at nothing. I don't know, unless you went into terracing and landscaping. But, so maybe there should be, that language should have a little bit of flexibility for the planning board to, to sort of talk about if it's facing non-visible space, you know what I mean, a non-visible facade, it might be okay. I don't know how, I mean, there's only a couple properties that are going to be able to make use of that kind of condition. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Do I need to reveal my name and address?
Please. Just leave by example.
David Rubin, 55, Circle Drive. Okay, I really thought I was going to come in here saying, "No, no, 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 no," but it's really not nearly as bad as I thought it would be. I just want to say a few things. I think that there are some restrictions in here, some restrictions in here about plot size and other things that I think are on the way to the right thing. But having said that, my big issues are going to be with Section 3A. There's absolutely no reason to have, I don't understand why we're talking about three or more family dwellings. That's just not what we should be talking about here. We should be talking about maybe attached townhomes or something like that. The idea of three or more family dwellings is totally inconsistent with the village, the nature of the village. That's one. Boutique hotels, I think you guys should, right now, just say, "Forget the 100. 25 is the max, or 30 is the max." And I think you'll diffuse a lot of bad feelings, because everyone saw 100, and it was like, "What's going to happen?" That's really bad. And then, that leads to my third point, and that'll be the last one, otherwise I'll go on for too long.
So, you're doing okay, sir.
Which is, which is this. When we had, what was it, the continuing thing with the guy with the white building? I don't remember the guy's name.
Carafiallo.
Yeah. So, the issues raised then are the same issues that we're going to have now. What were those issues, other than this construction noise thing which he had? What were those issues? If you have a big restaurant or an assisted, and I'm going to leave right after this, because I don't want to hear you, but if you have an assisted living facility, we have transients, staff people, residents, in and out constantly, and that's really bad. A bad thing for safety, a bad thing for the town. I'm very much against that.
I would say, I mean, since you've been so nice so far, I wouldn't want to disagree with you, but I think assisted living traditionally has less trips than most, than many other places.
Well, all right. Well, that would be something that would have to be fleshed out. But in general, I'm very concerned about any increase in traffic, any activities that cause interesting traffic and safety. That, those are the things that are a real problem. Whether we have this size or that size, it sounds like the restrictions are probably going to wind up being adequate so that they're not out of control, and the building, big setbacks, whatever it is. But, again, medical office, large practice, no.
No.
But it says it right here, it says-
So, the reason it's defined is if you, if you define something that's in the code, but it's not allowed as a use in the code, you now define-
Okay. That's a huge traffic thing. Can you also just talk about the overall traffic piece of it?
Yeah. One, there are a number of special permit conditions that would be required, and one of those is, will not result in a significant increase in traffic above present levels that cannot be mitigated. So, traffic analysis will be required in part of it.
I drive there every morning, and I-
Yeah, we all do. The traffic's a mess. We know that. Okay, so, so again, traffic, non-local residents, non-local people coming in and out to do the business that they are, that they would maybe be able to do because of the change in the youth? And with a restaurant or a hotel or anything like that, anything that has a large size, 100-room hotel, no, no, no. Those are the things that have to be considered. Those are the most important things. I'm done. Thank you.
You're all gone.
Hi, I'm Audrey Feinberg. I live at 39 Circle Drive, but my driveway is on Strawberry Lane. I have been a resident here for 25 years. I raised two sons who went through the entire school district. I want to talk about a couple aspects of this. One is the Maxon property, the other is the Abbott House property, and the other is traffic. But I think it's important to understand there's a problem with the Maxon property development other than just use of the road. So, there's a, this is a residential neighborhood. There's a lot of houses, including two family houses, along Circle Drive, and we look right across at the Maxon property. Maxon has been a good neighbor. I don't object to continuing office use there. What Maxon has produced is a little bump in traffic at 9:00 AM and at 5:00 PM. There's absolutely no weekend use, there's no evening, there's no, there's no, the parking lot's empty all weekend. You put a hotel in there, you've now added weekend, evening, noise, whatever. I mean, I disagree with my neighbor that a hotel of 20 people would be enough. It would be okay, just not 100 people. I think any consumer-facing thing that's going to have people in and out, Art Gallery was one of the items on the list, a hotel, assisted living, a restaurant certainly, is going to make that not a residential neighborhood. It's not Strawberry Lane. It is not a village road. I don't know if the board is aware of that. The village does not provide the snowplow service for it. The Maxon family has funded that. The Abbott House, under pressure from the city government, put in a speed bump, because it's also a straightaway that people will kind of zoom up, especially in bad weather. What happens is it gets icy, and if you're not in a four-wheel-drive vehicle, you have no business being on that road, which is narrow with rocks on both sides. And so, people make the turn from Broadway, it's the required entrance for Abbott House, and they're afraid they can't make it up the hill, and they zoom up. So, a speed bump was put in, the speed bump can't be used in the winter, so it gets removed every winter and put back. And a stop sign was just put in, also voluntarily by Abbott House. The village has not maintained that road, and I don't know if you're going to require a developer to maintain that road. Also, I think it's kind of weird that the setbacks are larger from Broadway than from Circle Drive. You're plunking a commercial use in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Why aren't you requiring just as large setbacks from Circle Drive to protect the houses that are there? So, now we have cars that have to come in Circle Drive and they exit Riverview, and that's the requirement for Abbott House. For the Maxon property, they go in and out on Circle. So, unless you're going to require that they create an entrance on Broadway, there isn't any other option. They use this really unsafe, overused road. You know, we deal with the Maxon people, and we've had problems with speeding from the Abbott House people. And as I said, they've been, tried to be a good neighbor and installed that speed bump there. So, I, you know, is the village willing to take over the road? I'd love you to take over the road, and then we don't have to worry about who's going to pay for snowplowing in the winter. But so far, the village hasn't been willing to take over that road.
Typically, they have to meet our engineering standards.
So, it's my understanding, because the state engineer came in when we were putting pressure 10, 15 years ago to get the speed bump, that it does not meet standards, that it's a problem for the fire trucks already that go to Abbott House. So, you know, you're talking about putting a assisted living facility that's going to have elderly people going to doctor's appointments, ambulances coming in and out. That is not a safe road. If you're going to allow anything there, I think you have to move the entrance to Broadway, and that needs to be a requirement. Circle Drive just isn't, I'm sorry, Strawberry Lane just isn't safe for that. And the Abbott House property, so let me say something about that. I would, I appreciate that you said this is going to be the first of a few hearings. A suggestion, when you do your communications, use the words Abbott House. I'm hearing from my neighbors and from people on Riverview that calling it North Broadway Corridor, they don't think that means Abbott House. And that misnomer has led to people not showing up earlier in the process, and I think that's just a little bit of a communication problem. And people know the words, you know, Maxon, people know the words Abbott House, but North Broadway doesn't mean Abbott House to people. Abbott House doesn't touch Broadway, it's way up the hill, right? So, now, what are we going to put there, something that uses more traffic on both Riverview and Strawberry? So, Strawberry's obviously my main concern, that's where my house is. Let's talk about Riverview. Riverview has to be crossed by all the children going to the middle school and high school campus. There's already, a crosswalk's been put in there, a stop sign's been put in there, but it's already a problem. There aren't, there aren't safe sidewalks, there aren't sidewalks on that side of Broadway. All the kids that live on that sidewalk up Riverview to get to high school and middle school. So, whatever you put up in Abbott House, you have to be worried about the traffic coming down Riverview, coming to safety of children.
We're not proposing to put anything in Abbott House.
Someone will.
So, we want to, we want to guide that now, not when they say we want to put in 500 townhomes.
So, what's okay with me. What's okay with me is what's there. I mean, Abbott House is...
Do you imagine if I said we're going to build 120,000-square-foot hospital?
Right. Abbott House is a non-conforming use. It's, they tried to be a good neighbor. They're a nonprofit. They do good works. We're a progressive community. We try and support the old work they did with disabled children and the new work that they do with our immigrant children. But you're talking about putting in now a for-profit corporation. I don't give them as much leeway in terms of dealing with traffic and safety issues. You know, Maxon is a quiet office. It isn't a restaurant. It isn't a hotel. It isn't an art gallery. There isn't any weekend traffic there. So, I, you know, understand, understand what you're doing is a major increase in the middle of a residential neighborhood.
What we're trying to do is figure out, we're actually trying to be... ...live with there, not waiting for someone, a contract vendor, to come in and say, "This is what we want to do." You know, so I think that's slightly different. We're not saying, "Hey, we want someone to develop Abbott House and put in a, you know, a 100-room boutique hotel there." We're saying, "Why are we okay with..." So, when they come in and say, "Hey, we want to put in a smelting facility," and we say, "That's not in our code. Get out." You know, so that's what we're trying to do.
And I also heard you comment, you don't want, you don't think $2 million houses are, you know, single-family houses are the best use? Well, my house isn't worth $2 million. Many of the houses on Strawberry Lane are much more modest than that.
I think I said four, actually, because that's what was proposed there.
I mean, okay, you know, God bless if you have that money, I guess.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying I don't think that's the best use.
No, but I don't, you want to know what I think, what it's owned for, which I think you said is half-acre, quarter-acre, single-family homes. There are already on Strawberry Lane two that are... homes and a quiet office like Maxon. And nothing more than that. Really, nothing more than that. Thank you.
Just a general question. Do you have any other potential vendors looking at those areas that...
We do not.
Okay.
Are you okay with hearing your name too?
Oh, Kathy Fisher.
We don't know.
Yeah, we don't know. That's true.
We just happened, these people just happened to...
Hey, how's it going? Oddie Bloom, 7 Irving Place, right across from the Abbott House on Strawberry Lane. Yeah, appreciate the proactivity. And we just moved into our place two years ago. We have a 10-month-old and a three-year-old. So, what we've seen, there's just a lot of traffic that goes, you know, around and down River View. So, anything that would increase... You know, a lot of people use River View to drop off their kids to get to the high school, and, you know, all the families that live along the road, you know, you see, there's no sidewalk there, so people just walk along the road. So, anything that increases traffic there would be a concern. And then at the same time, noise, you know, since we live right next to Abbott House, of course, we'd be concerned about that.
They're back up at Abbott House as well.
Yeah, yeah. So, just wanted to reiterate those points.
I just wanted to make a comment that the zoning doesn't necessarily, is approval of anything in particular, you know, it's like if you get to issues about a particular development, then it's, the zoning says that increases or changes in traffic have to be mitigated as part of the special permit process. So, that's really the plan. I'm looking at you, Mary Ann, just to correct me if I'm saying something.
You're correct. In addition to which, any one of these proposals would require a secret review. I know we don't have secret review on single-family houses, but all of these uses are uses that would require a secret review. On secret review, you look at traffic, you look at noise, you look at, you know, a lot of the stuff is specified in the special permit. You know what? Let me, I just want to say one other thing about the single-family houses, because I don't, I don't think we mentioned this in terms of the history of this thing and kind of what prompted it, is there was a proposal made years ago on the side of the big white house for single-family houses, and there was enough room to put there. What happened was because of the topography there, is it looked like a loosh trail running down to, um, it was really sort of frightening, and it was there that, and one of the things we haven't focused so much on is, a big goal here was to protect the look of Broadway with the, with the deep setbacks, so you didn't have it all broken up. And it isn't so much the single-family houses, is it, that combined with the topography of that, and you've got really very deep driveways with, and I think...
Like 17...
With 30 feet.
17 feet or... Not, I don't think I quite agree.
Well, they're very, very, you know, high retaining walls coming down. Yeah, maybe not 30, but...
I remember 17 or 20 feet, right?
Yeah.
On either side going up, so it would have been like a canyon.
Yeah, it's, yeah, there's nothing, no issue with single-family houses. It's just the topography there does not lend itself to it.
But that's not true on Maxon. The topography's the same as...
Maybe not my side of the street. I'm just, I'm just saying where the concern, and there was a lot of...
It doesn't mean that people can still do single-family homes.
Right, and that was one of the, one of the things that prompted the comprehensive plan update.
Because originally, when the continuum came, I was going to say, "Just make it single-family homes."
Ooh.
But it was, to me, it was just, when we saw the proposals, there was, they were, it just didn't, it looked horrendous. It ruined that whole...
On the continuum parcel, you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
We didn't eliminate their ability to do it. We just didn't make that the only thing they could do. Thank you for...
Hello, hello. I'm Ariella Toman. I live on River View Road. I'm a relatively new resident, and I love living on River View Road because I love my children walking to school. And I appreciate this conversation, and I appreciate the forward thinking and a little bit of development in the town and bringing some commerce, small commerce is great to bring revenue and others to our town. One idea I would like to propose is closing off the Abbott House Road to River View, allowing those cars to come down River View or up River View and having an entrance off Broadway. Maybe the developers can build their own roads. Maybe they can pay for that road. And then another concern I had was irrigation. I know that there's a lot of irrigation issues, especially with the heritage hill building and homes in River View that have a lot of water damage. And so, since this is also up on a hill, what kind of damage and water issues will those homes have with the digging and the new development? So, that would be something to think about.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Good evening. Once again, Seth Mandelbaum of McCullough Goldberg &amp; Stout. Since this is a separate public hearing, I'll reintroduce our team, and with your indulgence, we have a brief presentation on some specific aspects of the proposed zoning, which clearly the hearing is going to be held open, so we'd ask the board and your consultants to consider our comments as we go forward. Once again, from LCB Senior Living here, Director of Development, Pat Cleary of Cleary Consulting, and Amanda Grossi from my office, McCullough Goldberg &amp; Stout. We appreciate, as many people have commented, that the board is being proactive and considering various uses, including the possibility of assisted living facilities. We do have one minor comment about the way that use is listed. It says assisted living facilities or nursing homes is actually the description of the use. And as you're probably all aware, we all have aging parents, and we're all kind of learning the difference between independent assisted memory care nursing homes, and they're all very different things. So, we'd ask the board to think about perhaps not equating assisted living with nursing because they are very different uses with different staffing levels, different traffic patterns, et cetera. Our bigger concerns are really with the proposed bulk, whether unintended or intended, taken altogether, what happens on the Maxon property, which meets the four-acre requirement for assisted living, which talks about the possibility of up to 150 beds. But really, when combined in coverage, FAR, and Pat Cleary will speak to this in a moment, and height, taking those all together, it becomes extremely problematic to develop a viable assisted living facility of enough density that it is economically feasible. So, you might be creating a use that is not really feasible on one or more of these sites. Of interest to us, of course, is a site my clients are under contract to purchase. But with that, I'd like to just tell you a little bit about LCB since they are new to the market, and perhaps distinguish them from other companies that may have appeared in Irvington, who will go unnamed. And then Pat Cleary, we'll just take a few minutes as a planning consultant just to highlight a couple of the issues we'd like you and your consultants to think about, and maybe not have a one-size-fits-all approach to all these sites, which range, as you've talked about at your work sessions, from one acre up to as much as 18 acres. So, with that, we'll take a couple moments. Thank you. And I'll be very brief. Lou Bloom of LCB Senior Living. We're owner-operator developer of assisted living and memory care. We've been around for about 10 years, and we own and operate 22 communities within the Northeast. Assisted living, as you know, is a very low-impact use. Residents' average age is about 85. They typically don't have vehicles, have a very low-traffic generator, don't generate schoolchildren, pay full taxes. So, I think that's why we want it included. It's a good use. It's a needed use. So, anyways, the site, and typically within the assisted living industry is four acres to support 90 to 100 units. 90 to 100 units equates to about 115 beds, and the average size of the unit is about 950 gross square feet. That's, back maybe 10, 15 years ago, was much lower. Things have changed. Unit size is a little bigger. Common area is much more vast. We're very fortunate to be able to find a four-acre site in a community like this and one of the, that works is close to a village center, so we're very excited, and we know a lot of hard work went into the draft zoning, and it's good that you're proactive in doing that. But anyways, unlike a prior senior housing application, we don't do independent. It's assisted and memory care. Independents really, you get much higher impacts. Today, I'm playing here from a business perspective, that the site capacities and just don't work in a business model. They can't economically support a viable project, and there are about half of what would end up really being needed to be able to develop, even with the 16 and 17-acre sites. 150-bed capacity, where it equates to about 120, 530 units tops. Again, it just can't support the economics. So, what's being created is, you hit me on the head, a lot of developers, after the rolling's done, are going to come in and try and get variances. But anyways, thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I ask you, how many staff members for your 100-room assisted living? About how many total, including part-time or... Anyone's...
The biggest shift is the 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And that, for 90 to 100 units, is about 35.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Patrick Cleary from Cleary. The opportunity to submit to you a fairly detailed memorandum that suggested some recommendations for the zoning, and the objective really is to provide you with the industry's perspective on what you're doing. So, your award-winning comprehensive plan identified a vision for this area. The zoning that you're working on now is really the mechanics of how you implement that. The challenge you're dealing with really with this particular area is you have six very, very different parcels in terms of size, frontage, configuration. So, as I think Seth alluded to, perhaps the one-size-fits-all approach may not be the most appropriate method to address exactly the method by which you need to achieve the goal you've established in your comprehensive plan. And there are really four elements that we'd like to help you understand a little bit more, and it relates to the setback provisions, FAR and coverage, which Ashley described to you in some detail prior, and the height provisions. And what happens with the provisions as they are established today? First of all, of not accommodating the market so that the ability to create a high-quality assisted living facility may not exist given the provisions that you are considering today. The second thing is the potential of creating unintended consequences by modifying projects to sort of fit into the zoning envelope that's being created without really accommodating the necessity of the market that's driving the design of these facilities. So, for example, the setback provisions, the 250-foot probably works when we get to 300 feet. It is likely that the ability to also preserve the existing building gets compromised, and that's a challenge. That's a goal of yours, to preserve existing historic buildings. We would like to do that, but the further we get back into the site, and also the more restrictive the FAR and coverage requirements are, the less likely it is to preserve that building. And the way the zoning is established today, it refers to a bonus for preserving that building. If you think about how that building would be renovated, it would not be very efficient at all. So, from our perspective, it's not necessarily a bonus. It's an accommodation more than anything else. So, again, by imposing these provisions that aren't realistic enough to accommodate what the market demands, creates these sort of consequences that may not be the kind of things that you want to achieve at the end, excuse me, at the end of the day. So, what we'd like to do is participate with Ashley and afford you some more detailed recommendations on how those provisions could be modified, and particularly how perhaps there's a hierarchy of addressing some of those issues, given the disparate configuration of those parcels on the property. So, thank you very much for your consideration.
I think what I can hope for is a kind of boutique assisted living facility. Because everyone has to be 120 units, it's a lot over here, and I feel like someone else can make something out of 60, but obviously, it's not my business, and I don't know.
Hi.
How are you?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Friedman, and I live on River View Road. I guess the first thing, I actually have a, I have a couple of comments. The first question I have regards, the way that this is, these are the current parcels as they currently are owned and the way they're set, and I believe that the presentation we saw had ideas about where buildings could be set upon them based upon where the lines currently are. Is there anything that would prevent, let's say, that one and that one from being combined, or any two being combined, which would create any innumerable number of different ways that buildings could be built upon those parcels?
Sure. Someone can pile the co-ops just to the north. I mean, you could...
Right.
You could put a blank slate everywhere.
So, my concern about, well, except, yes, except in particular, so there are one, two, three, four, five, or six homes right abutting this area here on River View, and then a whole bunch over there, and then the ones across the... Those are, you know, private homes, and then, so maybe there's 20 or maybe even 30. You're kind of not really seeing River View in this picture, so you're seeing that side of the street, and then...
And one of those is mine.
Yes, yes, I know, I know where you live. So, both sides. And so, I guess the point that I'm making is that currently, the farther you get up River View Road, it becomes increasingly farther away from the high school, residential, kids walking up and down the street, just like lower down on the street. But that, the wider that north, south, east, yes, east edge could potentially be, the possibility of larger-scale building on that spot exists. And so, I just think that that's a pretty deep concern for those of us who live farther up River View Road, even those of us who don't live abutting any of this land, the idea of something fairly significant being built that far up into a residential, because now we're not talking about all the way down near Broadway, we're talking about deep into a residential zone where there isn't the expectation of lots of large-scale building. I mean, someone could knock down Abbott House and build something huge all in there, right? I mean, anything could happen, but I guess, so, am I correct or not correct?
I just wanted to point a couple of things out. So, first off, that area, if you recall, early on in the presentation, I showed an area, a map that had all the topography lines and the areas highlighted in purple. So, that wooded area in the, on the western, or sorry, eastern part of the Abbott House lot, is fairly hilly. That's a bit of a knoll right there, so it's not as developable. And another thing that I would point out about the Abbott House specifically is that building is significantly... ...that would be allowed under the proposed zoning. So, it's more likely that a building like that would be adaptively reused than taken down.
Can you show that other slide again?
Yeah, I can go back to that slide. Right. Right, so, yeah, actually, in all of these concepts, if you notice, we put the building much lower on site because it's so steep out there.
Actually, can I ask a question? Wait, wait, while you're on that one. So, the red is the edge, and then is the black... So the red is the edge, and then is the black 75, the black line, is that 75 feet back? Is that what that black line is?
Right, so the black line is the proposed setback. So it's 75 feet setback from all the parts that fronts on Strawberry Lane, because on that parcel, that's the front yard. And then the other parcels, the other sides, it's a 50-yard setback from the rear and side yards.
50, so all the way on the east side, that's 50?
Right. But as I mentioned, it's that area below...
Okay, so...
Do you do your topography picture?
Yes.
Oh, wait.
I have the topography picture.
Yep.
It was, it was right, it was...
It was...
Yeah. So you can see, it's quite a bit of a knoll there. And then to get up that knoll, you have to cross that very steep topography. And most of that's not actually, you have to cross that off the property.
Another question I had is regarding the setback and the trees that currently line that area. So actually, if you wouldn't mind going back to that other one that just shows, so in any given spot, if you were on that black line, which is the 50 feet in or the 75 feet in, in between the red line and the black line, currently, there's lots of trees. Is a builder permitted to cut down those trees? What are they allowed to do in terms of, because that tree line is at least currently a barrier for many different homes all around there, between what could be potentially developed and what currently is someone's house?
So the proposed zoning includes a special permit criteria for landscaping and screening. So as part of the site plan's special permit review process, the developer would come in with a proposal, and they would be required to include screening, additional landscaping, and buffering, that, you know, would be reviewed by the planning board and the architecture review board.
But what about current trees? Knocking down trees that currently exist? Because those are full, large adult trees versus new trees, which take a very long time to...
Typically, the planning board would not approve that kind of removal during site plan development. Now, the one instance where it's possible, is I think it's already been called out, is if driveways, you know, parking lot areas, but they would have to be outside, they can't be in the buffer area, right? They have to be inside the buffer.
Right. I mean, the access driveway can cross through that buffer area, but the parking lot cannot be a setback. So you wouldn't maintain landscaping. I mean, in some cases, during construction, or there may be some trees. Usually, as part of the site plan review, you would have an arborist go out and flag any significant trees. And that's something that could be reviewed by the planning board, which trees should be preserved.
Well, large buffers like that, they would just not attach, in most cases.
Right. And sometimes what you'll have them do is, within a certain number of feet of the proposed limits of disturbance, is where you would flag the specific...
Exactly, exactly.
And then include provisions for protecting those trees during construction.
And it's hard to tell in this picture. I'm not sure what season this was taken in, because it's actually very green. Maybe it is, I don't know why it looks brown. But there's a lot of big trees that I know of, in between the red line and the black line, that currently, at least certainly along Riverview Road. So I'd just like to also support my neighbor's proposal or comment regarding the idea. And I believe it's this line. This line right here, this gray diagonal line, I believe that that's currently the driveway that leaves from Abbott House to Riverview Road now, which does cause some traffic. There are vans, particularly at certain times of day, that go up and down. It's not too terrible, but we do see them. I think that would really go a long way toward alleviating some of, at least the traffic concerns for folks on Riverview Road.
But then all the traffic would be, from Abbott House would be going on Strawberry Lane.
Actually, I liked her proposal regarding, I'm not clear on exactly what a builder is allowed to build in terms of additional access, whether there's the possibility of building something that is neither Strawberry Lane nor that to Broadway.
It's a mix on, but I think Abbott House, yeah, the compromise that was made many years ago, because no one liked the traffic from Abbott House, was they would go up Strawberry and it's safer to go up than down. See, if you slide, you'd slide into Broadway. So the compromise was Strawberry down, Riverview. And I don't think there's any choice with those two roads.
But any new development proposed for Abbott House would be required to go through the state environmental quality review act process. And the proposed developer would be required to prepare a traffic analysis and then propose any traffic improvement measures that would be needed to support their development.
So the only other question I do have top of mind at the moment is, were this to be single-family development as it's currently zoned for, as opposed to commercial development? Is there a setback requirement as this, I mean, it's either 50 or 75, which is being documented here, and what is that setback requirement?
There are setbacks, I think it is 50.
I think it's 50 feet. Depends on the district, but in the one at 40, I believe it's 50 feet. It's probably 50.
Thank you. And I would like to commend the board for contemplating, being proactive. It is always very upsetting to think about new development in one's backyard. And you can hear that from everyone here, but we get why you're doing this. So we certainly want to work with you and collaborate with you in a way that is productive and, you know, preserves the quality of life for those of us who live in immediate surroundings. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
This is about the rack proposal?
No, 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 I almost said it. I had a quick question, Janet Kovacs, I'm a Village resident. As far as I'm reading it, Ashley, I could be reading it wrong, but is the possibility of single-family development still viable and feasible with this proposal? Are we just looking at multifamily dwellings?
All attached.
So with this proposal, single family's coming off the table completely? Like a developer can't even propose a potential single-family development?
Certainly not.
That's something I would maybe reconsider.
Attached, like Market Ridge. Right, those are single-family attached.
Sure, sure, yeah, no, I just think that you might still be limiting a potential developer from looking at one or more of those sites for, whether it's, you know, half-acre lots or acre lots, I just think, I just don't think you should take it off completely. Just a suggestion, I don't know. And then my next question would be kind of along with the trees. And I know it exists in different parts and different developments. It might be part of the site plan process, but, or have we, is it something that might go into a proposed code as far as having a developer seek a conservation-type easements, or having them donate portions of the lot to be kept as green space? I don't know if that's part of anything or a proposal that maybe you could consider as well.
What's happened with the conservation easements, they're a problem, because who accepts them? And then the person who accepts them is responsible. So generally, places don't want to do it unless it's really of good size. But you make, you can impose their requirement. It's a requirement of development that it has to be kept green. And then that way, it's the property owner's responsibility.
Right.
There are green spaces, and just carry on, like Hugh Hill Road, there's, right off of Park, right there.
Yeah, they exist. The problem is, who's responsible for maintenance? It's always starting to get the property owner responsible.
Right, again, but maybe a bonus or an incentive for a developer to be able to keep some of the space green, or not cut down so many trees in an effort to appease everybody? Just something to think about.
Is sort of the inverse of your lot coverage requirement, is your open space requirement?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Conservation easement, it would be unbuildable.
Right. So there are, those requirements are in place then?
Right, it's not called a conservation easement.
Right, of course, then.
It's the inverse of the lot coverage.
And setbacks are really to protect things, like the trees.
Right, right.
It gives a very large setback, because we've grown up, that's our welcome to Irvington border. So I think that's why we have such a large setback.
In front, yeah.
And again, in terms of Lot 6, that is pretty sloped, as far as that back little corner of woods.
So I think it's a little bit off now.
Yeah, yeah, that's pretty sloped, so, but, okay.
Yeah, I think otherwise Abbott House probably would still bend off for a little...
For some type of development. And again, it's very inaccessible, it's really hard to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Otherwise, we're leaving the hearing open, and we'll have other public hearings. What we'll do is we'll take back all the feedback and discuss it as a board, and then, you know, tweak the law, and we'll do it all again. So it's a arduous process. But I think it's better now that we're doing it than, you know, have developers dictating what we're doing. So I feel, and no offense to our developers here, you know, I think that, you know, in a perfect world, we wouldn't have had any development in front of us, but it's rarely a perfect world. So this is the next best thing we have. And, you know, I think we really do value everyone here's opinions, because the five of us don't have any better ideas, or all we have is Mary Ann to get it on paper and Ashley to help us visualize these things. Because these are really hard for me. I'm no land-use genius by any means. There's definitely people on the board a lot better than me. But we have to try to figure it out, and figure out what it means when you have 20% coverage and a 30% R. And, you know, those things to me, and so we got that nice definition of R on there. I never, FAR, I never knew what it was. Well, I knew what it was, but it was like this, it was like gibberish to me. So it's been very helpful to have Ashley help us through this process. And it's going to be helpful to have all of her. We're in no rush to get this right. Thank you all. And so we just keep going. And now the Irvington Woods Park rules and regulations and review of Matheson Park's master plan, which could have been a whole meeting for itself. Thank you, guys.
Right? We need to help to tell Matheson Park.
Yeah, we're talking.
I'm not even sure why I'm here. We're going to put a boutique hotel in the Irvington Woods...
Can you click the...
We're not up here, you do.
You're going to do the regulations? The regulations?
The playground, there are several members of the committee here. Lots of them have a little...
So the playground first?
Yeah, we're going to go with everyone, Joe, it's your meeting.
All right, well, this is John Ambiano of IQ Landscapes. John's been working with us for a while, and I don't think... So, I'm okay. So I just want to introduce a few people. We have Janet Kovacs of RPAC and co-chair of the Matheson Park Playground Committee, along with the Assistant Superintendent of Recreation and Parks, Maureen DePolly. They work together and with a tremendous group of residents. They have a few of them here. I thank you ladies for hanging in. I know it's been a long night, but thank you. So we, this whole process started, actually, back in 2004, when RPAC was asked to do a comprehensive study on all of our parkland. And we ended up making a proposal to the village board, maybe a year or two after that. And we thought we had a real shot to renovate Matheson, and then our role changed, and it kind of went away. Well, back in December, when we started engaging the community on what they wanted, and looking at the rules for all of our parks, because of what was going on up in the woods, we got some really good message from the community. And one of the things that really was clear to us was that people wanted to see us bring Matheson back to what it used to be, that they wanted it to be a destination, that they wanted to bring their families there, they wanted to be able to bring their kids there, they wanted to be able to bring bikes and scooters, and they'd also like us to find a way to make dogs be part of that if we could. So we listened, we talked to everyone. The playground, which was actually one of the very first projects I ever took on when I got here, was built in 1986. And it's been there since then, and we've really gotten more money out of it, but it needs to be replaced. And so Janet and Maureen, along with John, and again, an amazing group of residents, many of them who were working with us for the first time, which really made it nice, worked hard to help us come up with a proposal that married what I was working on for an entire park project. We plan on coming to you in the capital, but the capital process of the village budget, with Matheson Park being our primary target. So what you're looking at right there is the existing conditions of Matheson Park. There's not a pointer on here, is there? That doesn't work. Okay.
We don't have a copy of that, right?
I do, I can give you my copy.
Okay. I mean, we didn't have it ahead of time, and I just didn't...
Okay, but you're welcome to use that. The middle right here is, this is where the playground is, as we know it today. And then you can see the pathway that goes around the park, our bathrooms are over here, our splash pad or concrete hole is here. And, you know, that's basically your park as you're looking at it. Well, which button?
Joe, I'm not going to take your only copy. I just...
No, it works, okay, don't worry about it. Press it. It's tired. So now, if you look at those colors, the green again is the existing playground, and the yellow is showing you what the new footprint of what our new playground would take up. One of the things that a lot of the public said to us is, gee, how big are you making it? How much room in the park will you be taking away? And as you can see, the footprint pretty much follows what was there, but it allows us to do what we needed to do to extend the playground. Now, one of the reasons right now that you can't get bikes or scooters at either park is because the pathways aren't wide enough. Our insurance company recommended that 12 feet is what is necessary in order for bikes and scooters to go in there. So in addition to the playground, how do we do that? If you've been in the bathrooms in Matheson Park, you knew they had to be looked at too here. So here we go. So here's what the playground would look like from above.
Is it a fair spiel?
No, it's actually, it's a stage area to promote sensory type of activity. The committee looked at everything. So I will take no credit for any of the design, because I didn't understand half of it, but they did, and that's the important part. Now, if you look at the pathways, what starts to get interesting is you can see the pathways appear to be wider, and they are. And to give you a better look at that, we'll go to the next one. And there's your pathway. And what we're trying to accomplish there is obviously to have flow in the park, and then to have an ability to separate it. But you can envision that people will be riding their bikes, they can have their scooters. The playground is in a fenced area, it's entirely fenced off, which would be necessary if you are going to consider allowing dogs on leash. So the pathways, we also had it set up in a way so that if you look in the middle, if we were having a large activity out on the north end of the park, we could cut off parts of the pathway, keep the north end for the activity or whatever's going on, and then still allow people to have flow and use a good part of the pathway. Now, for the public, that's going to say, gee, we don't want bikes and scooters on the pathway. Our direction to them will be, well, Sina Hudson Park is going to say, stay the way it is, and we're going to ask people to go there. We have an option for the walkers, we don't have an option for the bikers. So we had to find a place to put them.
Can you explain that again?
There are people who don't, like, at one of our public meetings, we had a few people saying, please don't allow bikes and scooters in Sina Hudson Park. I need to walk, I want my privacy. We don't want to see them down there. So, you know, but there are a lot of people who want wheels in the park. There are people who want to be able to go, right now, if you go to Matheson, you can't really do anything, you know, and you don't, people want to stay, they want to make it a destination, they want to picnic all day, they want to barbecue. And if they could bring their bikes and their scooters with them, and maybe their dogs eventually, it allows them to make the park, again, be what we're hearing the public wants. Sina can never accommodate bikes or wheels, because the pathways are just too narrow. And it would be impossible to make them wider, you know? Impossible is the wrong word. It would be cost prohibitive to make them any wider. So, so again, so there you see a good look at the pathway, and again, the playground is very big and fenced, and there's enough open space in there, so that let's say we do allow dogs on leash to come in with the family. Well, there's enough area for the people who don't want to be their dogs, that if they went inside the fenced area of the playground, there's still plenty of room to hang out, there's places to sit, there's things for them to do, because we do have to feel respect. So, so again, so there you see a good look at the pathway. And again, the playground is very big and fenced, and there's enough open space in there. So then let's say we do allow dogs on leash to come in with the family. Well, there's enough area for the people who don't want to be their dogs that if they went inside the fenced area of the playground, there's still plenty of room to hang out. There's places to sit. There's things for them to do because we do have to feel respect. The entire, everyone needs into the park. Now, over here is the, I'll go to the next one. Going back to the playground, which again, I don't know if Janet or Maureen wanted to jump in or John. I mean, there's a flow to this. The river is over here. We have up in this corner, there are swings there. There are swings on the other side. There's lots of interactive areas. The committee went to playgrounds all over Westchester County to try to come up with the best stuff. And John did an amazing job of showing them what it would look like. We brought different companies in to make presentations to us. You can see the pathway that goes around. And again, just look how big the playground is. Look at all the green space in there. We will have to relocate the horseshoe pits, but those three white lines you see there represent the shuffleboard, which might become cornhole or could stay shuffleboard. We could use them for whatever we want. And this little blue thing right here is probably what we think people wanted the most, which is a splash pad. We have to introduce water back to the park. It's one of the biggest criticisms we get is that how could you have that spray pool down there and not turn it on? Well, it can't turn it on because it's old and it's dilapidated and the piping system underneath it, there's not much you can do with it. So that splash pad could be anything from a button that a child would push and water would come up. But, you know, it's, it's not an easy thing to do, but it fits there and it would work. And we know we can do the engineering below to make sure that it will be a really state-of-the-art type of activity.
What's in the middle of the part that you said other people could explain, between the swings, the section there?
John, Janet.
I'll just give an overview. So one of the things you may notice about this playground design is it's sort of made out of cookie cutter shape like some of the playgrounds they've made in Central York. It's not rectangular. It's a very organic feel to it. And one of the strong driving themes of the whole playground was to be nature inspired. To take advantage that it is on the river, number one, it has great use to the river. It's amongst these great oak trees which we're preserving. It's not a flat piece of property. It's very rolling. So it took on this organic shape, but everything else got reinforced, keeping that nature-based theme. We actually integrated plant beds in the playground where children and adults can interact with the play, with the sensory garden. It's divided into two main age groups for liability reasons, number one, but also for the skill levels, for two to five-year-olds to the left and the five to 12-year-olds in the middle with swings and climbers. A lot of the equipment itself is earth tones and based on either faux rocks or faux trees. That kind of elements introduced. And then the central circle piece that you see there is kind of a communal space where all age groups, adults, grandparents can congregate, has a small sand pit, a stage, wood stage, a sensory area, site is identified with telescopes overlooking the Hudson River, sand, the instrumental, instruments, outdoor musical instruments, both sound. So you can see there's a lot of thought that was given to this in terms of its shape and form and the impact on the environment.
So I guess the part I can't really figure out, I can talk to you later about this, is what kind of climbing equipment that is and what it looks like and, you know, how much is it like the Main Street School stuff or different, but.
Well, it's some of the, Janet, go ahead.
Just, I mean, just part of what the committee did, Connie, when we went out and looked at all these different playgrounds around the county. And we would come back and we got presentations from these different companies and we had books. And you can imagine, we're looking online and we're Google imaging things and we're looking at different ideas. And so for instance, one of the design templates that we looked at had a very similar apparatus that is at Main Street School, one of the older ones, not one of the newer construction, the new ones that they built. And we said, no, 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 like, our town already has one of those. So we really looked to design something here that is not replicated, either Station Road or Cine or any of the schools. So it's really great stuff. Again, all of this would have to go out to bid, so we didn't want to solidify exactly what it is, but there's definitely climbing mechanisms. There's at least three slides. There's some, a lot of cargo ropes. And again, some of the new age things that we're seeing in some of the parks. But again, keeping with an organic, natural feel to them. We didn't want it to be too modern looking, but again, we didn't want to show too much because it all has to be bid out anyway. So it's not like a set design. And then the little kid one has, you know, different, you know, a balance beam and a climbing, you know, logs that you can, you know, crawl through. The sensory area again was something that really came up. And we vetted all different things. I mean, you could go to the Bronx Zoo and look at the tree climbing apparatuses and the zip lines and all these different things, but we really, we wanted something exemplary. We thought Irvington deserved something really special and different that you don't see at any other park or school campus in our village. But we wanted to, you know, keep it sweet and fun and, you know, something where the kids could explore and enjoy themselves. So we tried not to repeat on anything that you see in the town already or in the school district.
The surface would be fiber because sand is not an acceptable surface any longer. And under the areas that would have the most wear, we would have a little piece of poured paving so that, like at the bottom of the slide, because you need to make it low maintenance, so we don't have to keep sending guys there to fluff the fiber and move it around. So there'd be landing areas that will help make maintenance much less of an intense thing for our guys. And the fiber is really the most acceptable material to use there.
And very natural. And the other part that, again, we didn't get into too many visuals yet as I think a preliminary presentation to you, or it's a pretty set concept that we've come up with, was that the fence ideas and very natural and very unobscuring and nothing that would be too, you know, obtrusive as far as a fence goes. Again, keeping where the shuffleboard courts are and keeping that green space all integrated into this whole play area, we thought was really cute too. So you could come in there and you could let your little one run on green grass, but still be kind of enclosed in this space. It's not just a playground. And then again, we're missing what you don't see again in too much detail yet are benches and that type of thing. So there would be more, the trash cans are not like noted on here, but we looked at everything.
But it's the intention to have kids actually interacting with each other who might not have come together. I've seen some parks where there are kind of imaginative play areas that can use your imagination to pretend things. I don't know. I can't tell.
Well, the performance in the stage area play right to that.
Yes. And also, so again, the climbing, in the big kid area, some of the climbing things, what was important to us as a committee was that there was space underneath those. And there actually are really cool like apparatus components, whether it's other bars or things you can swing on underneath the playground was key. And then one of the ones that we really liked was something that you almost, you climb up and it's almost like, kind of, you're like you're in a tower almost. And, yeah, and again, it has the nature theme, which doesn't really, it's not like a clubhouse or treehouses, but it's a little treehouse-like, you know, again, what we envisioned. And the different companies have different, you know, exact models.
And I'm going to ask John to talk about the trees a little bit. Those just aren't pretty pictures, so.
Well, we're preserving certainly all the specimen oaks there. There might be, we met with an arborist, your village arborist, and there might be a couple that are diseased, which I consider a hazard in the playground. But you have, this is what people die for, the playground with shape, you know, rather than building these big canopies and stands. You have it right here.
So try to keep it moving because I know you guys are as tired as I am. The bathrooms, we looked originally, originally, because it was Bob Monod's dream to put the bathrooms in the middle of the park because he thought keeping everything close and, you know, that's would be the best place. But after John met with Han Engineering and we talked to Ed Marin, it would have just, it would have been more expensive to do that than it would to renovate the whole park. So what came is what we did is we went back to where the original bathrooms are right now. So Sullivan Architects worked with us. And what we're doing with the bathrooms is we're actually losing a stall in each, but one of the stalls will be handicapped accessible. And then there'll be a ramp. Once you come into the park, there'll be a way to access the bathrooms from the ramp. Both doors will face the river for both, for the two entrances. So they'll be on that side. And this is basically the same footprint. There'll be a new roof. There'll be siding. It'll be painted. You know, obviously the windows will be repaired, but it was much more of, it made more sense to not spend the money on the bathrooms because we really wanted to see the pathway and the playground become the real priority. So this is really just taking advantage of the spot that's there, making sure it's handicapped accessible and making it look pretty, so. What we, we're going to go, after I go back, this is a stage area that's actually at Pearson Park. And we do not, we're not in favor of the roof they have there. But when we go back to Matheson, if you see over here, we are working right now on a stage proposal that would go in the north end. And just so you know, we, we actually made sure that where we're proposing the stage was an area that Han and Engineering told us was far enough away from the water that it would be safe. It would be the right thing to do. We're looking for a stage that, you know, again, I'll go back to what the Pearson Park one looked at. You know, it's natural. Obviously, we wouldn't want the grass in between the layers because maintaining that is almost is a real nightmare. But something that gets the performances off the ground, that you can see a band performing on there. You could see someone getting married there. What we're trying to figure out though is the construction of the roof. Being on the river, we have to be careful, you know, because the roof, the weather can be very mean. But we do want to have something, it may be a seasonal one. If you've been to the Dogs Ferry Park, Waterfront Park, they actually have a metal frame. They take this, the roof off in the winter and they'll put it back on again when the season comes. Again, we're not crazy about the look there. So we, we want a stage. It will be part of the overall project. We're just not ready to show you what the stages look like. If you funded us tomorrow, we're ready for the bathroom. We're ready for the playground. We know it has to be done for the pathways. And we think we're really addressing what a lot of the community has said to us. You know, just thinking about, again, for us, you know, as a rec, you know, with recs in the back, you know, when we looked and we talked about being able to address so many of the concerns the public brought to us and roll it all into one project, we think we've done that here. You know, and we think that it's probably a year and a half to two-year project from when we get the green light to go. So again, we'll come back. We'll give you numbers. We'll show you. I mean, we've got ideas, but we'd like to wrap the stage into it before we finalize that. And we hope you'll consider it. If any of the committee members wanted to add anything, now's a good time. Anybody? You okay with how I've done it?
Yeah, it's great. We're just super excited to show this to you. So thanks for listening.
So there we are. You know, Matheson is, you know, it will be set for a very long time if we're able to do this. And, you know, on weekends, when parking isn't an issue, you know, we see people flocking back down there. Again, the progression would likely be, if this is approved, without question, RPAC's already had the discussion, allowing the bikes and scooters would almost become automatic. The next discussion is allowing the dogs on leash in with residents. And the only reason I'm not saying that's a done deal is because there are people who've approached us who are not in favor of that. But we think it's a good discussion at that point. We think we addressed the safety issue. And we think it would, it has a very good chance, you know, to be the way we go. And if we can, you know, I think we hit a home run here. I really do, so.
So your idea of the fence for people who don't want to be near dogs? Some parks have signs saying, you can't be here as an adult if you don't have a child. Would that not be the case? You know what I mean? Where you can't bring, you can't come into a certain area of a park unless you have a child. So that if you're an adult without a child, you're not allowed. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Right.
So what I'm saying is if the purpose is to provide places for people that don't want to be near dogs, you would have to not have that rule.
Well, the biggest concern is for kids who are afraid of dogs.
What about adults who are afraid of dogs?
Well, that's going to be the discussion of when RPAC is asked, what do you think about allowing dogs in the park on leash? That's got to be part of the public discussion. I don't know if I have the answer to you right now.
What I'm saying is it would be a good option for those adults if they are simply allowed to be in the play area.
Oh, so you're saying?
Yes, yes. You don't want any adults.
We're not putting another gate attendant in the park.
What you're saying is we're not blocking.
We're not, we're not.
It's not blocking adults.
No, no. I could, I could see an adult going down wanting to hear the kids play the instrument.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, no, no, no.
And you're looking.
It's not a restriction.
At parks, there's many that say, this is not a park for adults without kids. Wherever you are, people, the better. Everyone has to be alive.
Interesting.
You can't come in here if you don't have a dog.
You know, the stage also opens up so many other possibilities for us. I mentioned to you one of the proposals that we've already had some preliminary discussions with the theater and talked about things such as maybe Shakespeare in the Park in the summer or, you know, Jazz Festival, all different types of things. Just envision when the Face events are down, there, the use of the stage. You know, years ago, Maureen and I remember probably more than anybody, we used to do concerts down there all the time. We used to have, you know, movies in the park. And we'd like to get it back where people feel Matheson is the place to go and bring all that stuff back a little at a time. But you first have to give it a facelift. You really do.
Aggressive.
Thanks. So John, you want to add anything?
No. I had a question.
Sure.
And this is just a side comment. You don't have to go into depth. It's something to think about. How much discussion was there in terms of Hudson River rise and protecting, creating buffer zone plantings along the rip rap that's there now? That's one question. And secondly, you said that, you know, before you start building a lot of infrastructure, like a lot, but staged, depending how you do it, you definitely want to see, you know, where it is elevation-wise versus the various curves.
We have the new FEMA maps that your engineer provided us.
They're designed around those maps.
Right. For how many years out?
Well, they redo the maps every few years.
I understand that. What I'm trying to get at is we can't, I'm being very concerned about building a park that isn't built with some resiliency in mind. Because we don't want to be in a situation like Cine Hudson where every time the river floods significantly, there's a lot of damage that'd be repaired.
The only thing, and that's why, if you see the structure here we're proposing.
Yeah.
Okay. First stone, what we're talking about, if we put a stage in, it's got to be something of real substance as opposed to something that's, you know, kind of lightweight and whatever. And we made sure that Han told us, where can we start building? Where can we start doing things? And he was comfortable in his.
Can you go back to the master plan?
Sure.
Because the majority of the playground stuff, the elevation, it would have some relevancies, 12.
Yeah.
So it's elevation 12?
That's pretty good.
Yeah.
Except for storm services.
The playground's in trouble. Metro North's in trouble too.
Which it is. Furthest we've had water come is to here.
Yep.
And that was one of the most amazing days of my life to see the Hudson River in Matheson Park, so.
And again, you may see it again.
So the pathway, of course, would be affected. We can't do anything about that.
But someone like, I mean.
The playground, we really feel is as safe as safe can be.
But the electrical equipment for the stage and things like that.
Well, the stage, for instance, I mean.
Well, the playhole is there now, and we tap off of those.
Well, one of the things you do, for instance, and that's a standard kind of thing to do in a flood zone, is you don't actually build a foundation. You build things up on stilts, you know, so that it's a raised platform rather than a solid platform. You know, and that has its own issues and.
And I do want to go back to what you started with because it is something we're looking at. The challenge of protecting the shoreline, if you will, is you don't want to block the view of the river. But adding some things that could assist is definitely something we can look at. We've, you know, every time there's a storm, what people don't realize is we lose some of the shoreline. And when we find good stone or good dirt, we'll bring it in and have, and dump it there to try to keep coming up and up. We've got to be a little more selective because a couple of people got in there and dumped things we wouldn't want. But we've also talked about certain kinds of, you know, like you said, shrubs, grasses. How do we, how can we incorporate some of that without blocking the river? It'll definitely be part of our discussion. I'm trying to remember, I had the discussion with Rita O'Leary. That's why I have.
Okay. Yeah, because, I mean, there are techniques and things to be done. And you know that there is, as you know, there's a whole thing about Hudson, New York Harbor, Hudson River flood management over the next 40 years or whatever it is. And they're, one of the plans of the, I don't know how many, six or eight or however many different. different plan there are, is to increase a lot of planting and wet zones, you know, wetland zones along individual rivers.
These individuals pay for that exact thing. So that's something that you'll work on, right?
Yeah. So, you know, the key is, we'd like to, if possible, keep the saltwater off the roots of the oak trees, if you want to keep them viable.
Okay. So, no questions or...
I just want to say, having been very peripherally involved with this, and seeing how hard this committee worked, you know, Maureen, it was your job, so, you know, you get some credit. But for Janet and for the opportunity for our board to hear from a segment of the community that we don't often hear from, you know, newer residents, residents with young kids, not too many of us have young kids. Grandkids, young grandkids probably don't have kids. No, but I mean, really, we don't hear from these people, and this is a segment of the public that we really do need to hear from. And you're letting us know what you want, and it took a lot of work into it, I appreciate it.
Larry, thank you so much. I was just going to say a closing word, because I'm a smush and I always kind of have to say a couple more things, is that this committee was 11 people, so was Maureen and myself, Rick Rizzulo was on the committee from RPAC, and then we had in the room Yessenah Sorrell, Emily Sobel, Kerry Korman, Andrea Vitale, Christina DeCarlo, Matt Caiman, Greg Rhodes, and Jane Ann Corelli. And we really were a really good cross-section of newer residents and lots of older residents, such as myself, and young kids, and then a couple with older kids. And our very simple vision that we threw together in December was to, that we had an opportunity in front of us, that Joe put it before Maureen and I to select this group of Irvington residents with the task of redesigning the gem of Irvington, which is Matheson Park, and redesigning the playground, if you will, for the next shift, you know, next future generations. The one that's been there is 30-plus years old, and again, Irvington and its residents deserve a new one, and we think we came together and did a nice job. So thank you to all the committee members, and thank you for listening.
You guys don't have to stand for this.
You don't know about rules?
We're talking about the woods now.
So, you should just say yes and let me publish it.
The only question I had was about the discussion you guys had about, say, fishing at the reservoir, or boating at the reservoir.
Well, everything under the reservoir was requested by Jim Englishby, the superintendent of the water department. Those are the rules that he asked us to include in what we put through in support of Jim, and because that's what's on the books right now, that's what's there. Not saying, I mean, again, I go back from wanting to put boats in the reservoir, so... But, you know, that area is basically driven by the water department, and they need to protect the land around it. But here's what I could tell you about the rules for the woods in the park. Again, it started with those public meetings, the woods committee, Nikki was here, but, you know, she melted. You know, the woods committee, we were going to do extensive surveys, and what we found is in our group meetings, we all knew what we really thought you should consider the rules to be. The most drastic thing we're asking to do, and we probably will do it for Halsey too, is changing and going with, and in our saying is, "Carry in, carry out, leave no trace behind." And that's really what we're trying to accomplish. That's probably the biggest change. And, you know, the rest of these rules are common sense types of things. People complained, "Too many dogs with people or dog walkers," so we limited it to three. Okay? People complained about bikes going off trails, so we said, "Stay on the trails." And we really, you know, gave this a lot of thought, but the garbage was the toughest. We were even going to say that if you picked up after your dog, you'd have to take it out also, but we didn't think that was reasonable. You know, it's July 15th, you just walked your Great Dane and you've picked it up, and now you're going to put that in your car and drive home with it? So we're going to have strategically placed spots where we'll have the dog units with the bags. And the unique thing we're looking at, which the committee's very excited about, that we found in our research, is there's actually garbage bags, you know, regular-sized garbage bags, that you can buy a stand for. And encourage people, if you're going for a walk, you want to clean the woods, take one of these garbage bags, and when you leave, we ask you to take it with you. And it's kind of a unique approach, but we think it has some real potential. You know, right now, we're looking at these things being placed at the Cyrus Field Lot, at the Nature Center Lot, most likely near the East Field. And those are probably the three areas that we're focusing on the most. Doesn't mean that's all. But once you give us the green light, we've got a lot of signage to do, we've got a lot of planning to do. Our goal is sometime late September, October, to ask you to christen the brand-new park and uncover everything with an event at the O'Hara Nature Center. So, we just need you to decide what steps, if any, need to be taken, because the important part that the committee wants is, once these rules are established, how do they get turned into becoming part of the code, so that when we need enforcement or we need police, it's not a matter of guessing what the rules are, that the message was, police need to have it, they need to know it's clear, it's got to be on the books, and whatever the penalty is, is not something that anybody has to think about. That's a real frustration for people on the committees, is that, you know, when we do want to enforce something, there seems to be some uncertainty on that.
So, Joe, what, off the top of your head, what is different in these rules? Which items are padded?
The carry-in, carry-out, by far.
The drone is different.
And, well, the drone, we're afraid of the drones.
No, I'm just asking, I'm not asking for just...
There's not much, you know, again, solidifying the hours, really, you know...
Vaping, isn't it?
Yeah, every place in Irvington, we have no smoking, we have to add vaping now, because, as you know, it's the biggest problem facing us and our teen population in the community. So the vaping is a new word you haven't seen anywhere else. And the word vaping kind of carries all the other bad things that can go with that. The open fires were never properly defined. Making sure people have sleepovers, and we get a couple a year, mostly through the Boy Scouts, that they know there's a permit system. That way, we can notify the police department that there's somebody in the woods, and it's not a guessing game. It happened a few weeks ago, the scout leader gave us his numbers, we gave him all our numbers, he told us where they would be, so God forbid something happened, we knew right where to go find them. The dog stuff was pretty easy. You know, one thing we have to stress to people is that they are required, if they, once their dog becomes four months old, he needs a license. And that shouldn't be something that we have to beg people to do, that's the law, that's what you do. If you want to go in the woods, we have a right to think, and if we're going to let you come in Matheson eventually, people have a right to know that you brought a dog in that has a license, that's had its proper shots, and that they can at least know that that dog has its vaccinations and everything else that it needs. And again, the concession to allow, if you, for lack of a better word, the poop stations is really something we felt we had to do, so, yep. And we've taken the garbage pails away from Split Rock, because we have to start, you know, and one of the things we're hoping to do, working with the Green Policy Task Force, and working with some of the environmental groups, and we had a couple students who were doing their internship with Nikki and with Ann, they asked what they could do to help. We said, "Once these rules are done, you can make sure all your friends know what they are, and you can help us promote it throughout the community." So, that's where we are.
So, when you get the updated, I assume there's going to be an updated park map as well with the...
Larry and I have only had a preliminary discussion on that. We do think something has to get done, but it may not have to be as drastic as I know I originally thought. So, because we want to make sure we could define on the new map, what is the Irvington Woods Park?
I'm not talking about drastic, I was just going to say, is there a room to put the regulations on that, so that when people...
We're looking at putting an extension on the kiosk as a place in the woods, so that people will know what the new woods rules are. And then some of the things, the most important ones, will be on specific signs. We're not going to put every single one of these on every sign in there.
No, what I was saying is, on the back of the map, for instance...
Oh, sure, absolutely, yes.
Because everyone takes a map, right? And that way, they can't say that...
Yes.
Just stating a fault to the map.
Yeah, because what happens is, the dog jumps out of the car, you're running after the dog, you're not reading the regulations, or the kids jump out of the car.
And the other difficulty with the woods is, don't forget, we can do everything in our power to educate everyone in Irvington, using every means we have, but we get lots of guests. I mean, we have people coming from all over to look at the gardens, and, you know, they don't all know what the rules are, so we have to really try to make sure we do the right thing. Residents are going to be the easy part, so, not that they'll follow the rules, but to tell them.
Not to make this evening longer, but at some point, I know part of what the committee was talking about, about Matheson, were the rules and regulations about Matheson. Is that another discussion for another night?
There's no, there are no changes on the board for Matheson.
No, that's what I said, for another night.
Yeah, no, I'd like to...
I'd just like to hear what the committee said and what the...
Yeah, because my understanding was, and maybe this is for another evening or another presentation, but that all of Chapter 153 was being looked at, and that there were going to be some proposed changes, perhaps to Chapter 153. And I know a number of us who spoke at some of those park meetings were particularly interested in one change that hasn't come up tonight, but certainly, we would like to speak to that at some time in the future.
Okay, well, I'd like, I'd be interested to hear the discussion.
And again, I do think there's another night that's needed for this, because we've still got reports to give you on Memorial Park, on scenic Hudson Park, on Halsey Pond, you know, because we looked at all of them. There are no drastic changes that we're looking at in any of those parks. We think scenic Hudson is kind of locked into what is there right now. The only exception for scenic Hudson, the public asked us, "Can we get another activity down there?" So the area in front of the parking lot, leading out between the parking lot and the river, we're going to propose in there, somewhere in the three-to-five-year capital plan, a hardcore surface that could be used for everything from pickleball to volleyball, just another spot for people to have activity. You know, pickleball is one of the fastest-growing activities around, we get a lot of calls to volleyball. So we've got recommendations, but no rule changes. The question that's being brought up was, are we going to change the rules about residents only in the park? RPAC made it clear to the groups that we were meeting with that we were not going to discuss that. We felt that's a decision for you to make. We think it works the way it is. When the time was right, and we met with several of the community members who wanted us to consider it, we explained, we thought that was something that needed to come in front of the board, because RPAC wasn't in a position where they felt there was a need to change it. We think we're inviting enough, we think we, you know, are open enough, we think there's always ways for people to get to use the park, so we left it basically the way it was.
What do we need to do to adopt these proposed rules?
Yeah, these are for the Irvington Woods Park.
Yes, I understand.
What you need to do is amend the code. Right now, the rules for all the parks are in Chapter, I think it's Chapter 153.
So you would just enact a local law to, you know, if you want me to, let me know.
Well, but here's what I need you to do, if you say yes to this...
To which is yes?
To the Irvington Woods rules.
Proposed rules.
There are wordings in the rest of the code that need to be changed a little bit. Like, there's one thing that says, "You can't play baseball until after 1:00 on Sunday afternoon."
2:00.
2:00, I'm sorry. So there's some other minor things in there. Where it says, like, "No smoking," we want to add the vaping. There are other little farts of that.
You could either wait until they've gone through all of those and have one local law that includes all of them.
We can have that back to you relatively quickly for all of the rules.
We do that and that, and there's just a change we need to make.
And then you can have the discussion with the part of the community who thinks the entrance to the park should change.
But that would be a change that has to be made to the Halsey Pond rules, because there's a deep restriction, and those aren't all reflected in the rules.
That would be a public hearing, there'd be a change in the rules.
People would get it, right.
Can I just suggest that there be a public hearing about Chapter 153, about the rules?
Yes, you have to, you can't amend it without a public hearing. Yes, so let's have a public hearing.
What, besides the residents alone in particular, did you want to...
Yeah, no, that's the only thing that I and many others in the community are concerned about and would like to address before the board in kind of a formal, as opposed to informal way.
Right, and I think that's the beauty of the public hearing.
Just, because I think, I want to make sure we don't have to drag this on further than we can. You're comfortable with the other discussions about what I said about the other parks and the rest of the content of 153, really not changing drastically, other than just being, giving better words and big touches. Your main concern is residents in Matheson being the key issue.
No, the residents-only restrictions that apply to all the parks in Irvington, with the exception of scenic Hudson, because that's how currently, Chapter 153...
And the Irvington Woods Park, which will now, because there'll be no restrictions there. Halsey Memorial and Matheson are under the residents-only rule, but the only one where there's really, the only two places where it comes into play is tennis courts, because I can't accommodate everyone, and Matheson, which I think is your main, is it fair?
That's, have a good discussion.
Okay, thank you. It's been wonderful.
This is a great work. Thank you so much. It's evident how much, oh, time, thank you.
Authorization approved, change order number one for whoever you wrote, use of pump station. Resolve, you want to say it with the sister, I think we know what it is.
I'll take this back. I just thought maybe if something came by email and I never saw it.
I do have a question about this, though, Brian, before I go to a vote.
Thought it was too small to have a question on, but go ahead.
No, I'm just a little bit concerned if there was a discussion about, maybe I misread it, but converting from landline to cellular for your status and control mechanism, is that, like, is there any backup? Because, you know, when we have certain kinds of outages, the cell service goes down throughout the entire region. And so that means that the pump house, pump station is not directly accessible in terms of, in times of those kinds of emergencies.
I don't know anything about it, sorry.
Which part of it don't you know about?
I don't know even whether, how mission-critical the controls are, because that's really the heart of what you're asking.
That is what I'm asking. Okay, well, so I'm not ready to vote on that particular comment, because I think it's a bad precedent to go forward and vote on a change in the system when you don't know how critical it is, and whether or not there is a backup for those kinds of situations like the last few major hurricanes we've had, where the cell towers have been out for extended periods of time.
I have no idea.
I mean, to me, it seems like they're changing the control system, but we don't know if that's replacing or just adding wires to it as well.
That's what I don't know, if it's...
Is this Jim Englishby, is the one who, is the knowledgeable person on this?
Yes.
I mean, I'm guessing.
And he's recommending this, or, yes?
So I'm comfortable putting it to a vote and then getting additional information, because I can't imagine Jim would just...
Let me get, can we just ask Jim to give a little explanation, maybe to Larry or to you, and then he can tell the rest of us?
Yeah, sure, we definitely might, but to me, it's such a tiny change to the overall. It's a $200,000, you know?
It's a tiny change monetarily, but it may be a significant change in terms of resiliency, so, you know, I think going forward is foolish.
Is there likely to...
I don't know why, we could vote on it at the next work session, that's a week later. Is there a critical...
I don't know, but to me, it's, I don't have a landline in my house anymore, I got rid of it, you know, most, almost everyone I know...
But you're not operating a public water facility for the entire village.
Right, but this is, I mean, I, this is, there's no way that this pump station is operating the entire, for the village either. But we can hold it over, but I can't imagine Jim Englishby is going to say that we can't have water in the village.
Isn't that pump station our key feed from the, from Irvington?
But there's also oversight, I mean, you can go, you can manually change it as well. I mean, I think this gives it more flexibility, but we can wait.
The above changes are recommended by James Hahn, engineering, village consulting.
We can just wait, we just wait, I don't want to talk about something, I'm careless about this, we'll talk about it next time.
All right.
You should care about it. I mean, that's the point about oversight of this board, is to make sure that people are thinking about everything, not just pushing through. Anyways...
To me, I would be okay to approve it, if they came back and said, "You know what? You're right, we can't, we can't, if there's a cell tower going down, we can't run the water system." run the water system, we say, well, that's idiotic, add the wide line back, but we can wait, we can wait. Authorization approved, construction change, directive, fire department interior renovation project. Any questions on this one? This looks like it's a little additional thing.
A whole series of changes that we've built up, yeah.
Resolve, approval, destruction, change directive of three to contract 2018-24 with Virtus-Teens Contracting Inc. for the fire department interior renovation project in the amount of $7,171.72, and authorized by the village administrator to execute said change document, I'll make motion in five seconds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of contract 2019-11 with Garden State Fireworks for fireworks display, resolve to approve contract 2011, 2019-11 with Garden State Fireworks, Inc. for fireworks display until October 2019, authorized by the village administrator to execute the contract.
Did we see the contract, by the way?
We don't know how, do we know how much it's worth? $17,000.
So, it's similar to last year's.
I think the other thing that's on here, I think the rain date is actually Rocktoberfest, not July 5th, because that's usually on the schedule.
And this is not...
But it was unchanged, my understanding was unchanged.
Rocktoberfest date?
I don't know that we filled in the right date for the final document, but it will be.
Okay.
That's what I'm understanding, was that they...
Okay, if that wasn't what I reviewed, but I mean, that's an easy change. Some of this fundraise?
Yes.
Okay. All of it?
I think all of it.
All of it?
I think the actual fireworks is probably the case committee's going to pay for.
Okay. All right.
So, resolve to approve contract 2019-11 Garden State Fireworks for fireworks display until October 2019, authorized by the village administrator to execute the contract, I'll make motion in five seconds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Equipment of the village historian? Anyone say anything about this?
Yes. This went through Pat Ryan and myself, and then Pat Ryan checked with her board, and they all support this recommendation for appointment, as do I. I know Dr. Longkey and I were both actually at a symposium a couple of last week, where Eric Weiselman-Burgis is actually the program, and he had about 15, 20 kids who were presenting their history papers, and there was a back and forth with questions from him and others. So, it's, you know, he does way beyond at the high school, and he's done a lot of research on the village already, so, I support this.
Yeah, yeah, someone had to listen to history more, yeah. Resolve to appoint Dr. Eric Weiselman-Burgis, will just wear the term expire December 1st, 2019. Make motion, give me a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And he'll be, he'll explain to him why he's got such a short duration.
Bedlocked, he's only...
A short duration.
Oh, that's...
We have to rest him.
Well, I said, that's all redone in December, I'll explain it.
He'll be rubber-staffed in December.
Right, believe me.
Then we have a bunch of out-of-town travel for the police. The further afield, I think, Arizona, we actually got some backup information on, it looked pretty impressive, to be honest.
Yeah, I was actually...
I want to go.
He wants to be in Phoenix in late June.
Yes.
Good luck.
It's alive.
Oh, God, it works, oh.
He'll be inside.
Spray water on yourselves, like this.
Resolve to approve the out-of-town travel for officers Johnson and Grollier to attend the IAFC High Conference Spotlight on Fraud VII, from June 4th to the 6th in Hunkinsville, Connecticut, the cost of the conference will not exceed $1,200. Further, resolve to approve the out-of-town travel for Chief Saron and Sergeant Frank Pignatelli, which end FBI training from July 19th to July 24th in Hot, Phoenix, Arizona, the cost of the conference lodging and miles not to exceed $5,000. Hope they're not driving out there with the mileage.
No.
That'd be some road trip. And be it further, resolve to approve the out-of-town travel for officers Pignatelli and Seaman to attend the National Tactical Officers Association Law and Operations Conference and Trade Show, August 18th to 24th in Hot, Orlando, Florida, the cost of the conference not to exceed $1,100. I'll make motion, give me a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve out-of-town travel for ass, how can the board respond?
Looking for it, we heard it.
Resolve to approve the out-of-town travel for Lisa Toney to attend the Sam Marijuana Summit in Atlanta, Georgia, from April 24th to April 25th, the cost of the conference not to exceed $1,100. Make the motion, give me a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reports of boards, standing committees, and officers, trustee liaison reports.
Keep it short, no tree commission meeting tomorrow.
Not sure. Nothing from the rec, I guess they're here all night.
Jim Englishby is doing all the things he always does, and Greg is doing all the things he always does, I mean, thank the both.
Nothing, Dave.
Okay.
Village wintertime report?
Nothing's made.
Village per treasure report?
I'm happy to report that we have online bill pay for taxes.
I got mine today.
He's on it, yeah.
He's on it, it's a right there.
And it is working, they can pay at no charge, online, but you should...
So, I had one quick question for you.
Well, the credit card has a fee, but...
It does, yes.
On the chart, on the water bill, there's a dotted line at 10, right?
On the water bill, on the website or in the mail?
In the mail, on the water bill. There's a dotted line for, at 10, that goes across the chart, so, but the other, it would be nice to, do you have any...